November 16th meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. If you're able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would our clerk please call the role of council?
Councilmember Hayner?
Here.
Councilmember Dish?
Here.
Councilmember Griswold?
Here.
Councilmember Song?
Here.
Councilmember Grand?
Here.
Councilmember Redina?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Ayer?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Briggs?
Here.
Councilmember Ramloley?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda? Move by. Councilmember Ramloley, seconded by Councilmember Redina. Discussion of the agenda. Councilmember Hayner?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. When I spoke with Mr. Postama in legal about DC4, after DC2 was on here, it was suggested that I suggest that it was designed a bit of a substitute or parallel resolution, so it's potential that we might want to discuss them in proximity to each other. So I don't think it needs to be formally moved. I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you for the discussion. Call in favor? Opposed? Agenda is approved. Do we have communications today from our city administrator?
Yes, Mayor. I've got a couple of things to announce, I guess. First of all, we have some new faces at council. I want to thank all of you continuing council members and new council members for your energy and commitment to public service. We look forward to working with all of you. A couple of announcements. You know, there was a storm that came through with a lot of wind over the last, I don't know, five or six hours yesterday. Number of power outages. DTE has indicated that they expect to have about 75% of the people up tonight and 90% by tomorrow. As far as the number of challenges that we're facing with the governor's announcement yesterday, I wanted to give you an idea of some of the changes that we anticipate having for city staff. First of all, all of our essential services will continue. You know, the police, fire, water, storm, refuse collection, all that will continue. We are planning to close City Hall to the public starting Wednesday for the duration of the three-week period or pause. During that time, we will continue our services online, by mail, and by phone, so residents are still able to transact pretty much all the services that they need in that way. We're also closing all of our indoor recreation facilities. There'll be an announcement about those tomorrow along with some other information. Our employees are moving to mandated telecommuting service if they're able to for their job. Obviously, we have a number of employees who that doesn't apply to, but if they can, they will be. And the boards and commissions, we're going to continue to support the boards and commissions, but I will say that some of the work that the boards and commissions request may be delayed a bit as we go through this time of stretched capabilities. Those are some of the things that we're planning to implement in relation to the governor's announcement. On the agenda tonight, you'll see coordinated funding. This is something that is changing, and I wanted to have, I had talked with the county about coming and talking to council just briefly about some of the changes that we anticipate seeing. So that's on your agenda. And then lastly, you know, from a financial perspective, we are still, our projections have not changed from a month ago when we last gave a projection. However, we're going to be monitoring that pretty closely as we go into this kind of challenging period here in the winter to see how that changes. Those are all the things I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. We now have an introduction. Washtenaw County Coordinated Funding Update. It's a lot of your, floor is yours.
Good evening, and I'm also here with Morgan Williams Boyd-Stens from OCD also. I do need to get permission to share my screen, though. Just do a quick presentation.
Teresa, you should have permission now.
Okay, let me give it a go. Thank you for your patience there. Can you all see that okay?
You bet.
Fantastic. So thank you so much for having us tonight. We did want to do a quick update, a review of coordinated funding partnership because we know there are new council members tonight, sort of talk about the current status and then where we could go in 2021 with some changes and new opportunities, honestly. All right. So just to start things off, coordinated funding is a partnership currently of six different funding partners. So the city of Ann Arbor, Washtenaw County, and the Washtenaw Urban County are the public funders, and the private funders are United Way of Washtenaw County, Ann Arbor Community Foundation, and St. Joseph's Mercy Hospital. Between the six coordinated funders annually, they're able to basically grant or fund between four and $5 million in order to support the social safety net and other elements, including capacity building and systems change work as well. There's three components of that funding. The largest by far is program operations, which is where the public dollars are mostly focused to basically providing support to nonprofits to do direct service provision to residents of the city of Ann Arbor and then all of Washtenaw County. So the six funders contributing between four and $5 million into four priority areas. So you'll see what those are here. They are safety net, health and nutrition, amount of order, aging, housing and homelessness, safety net, health and nutrition, and the cradle to career, which includes early childhood and also school-aged youth. So those are the areas, and we are funding right now over 40 local nonprofits. So that's been the partnership. It's been going on for about 10 years now, and we are expecting some changes, but I still want to sort of kind of talk through where we are currently. So within these four major funding areas, we do have a series of outcomes that we are trying to reach each year. You can see those around aging, cradle to career, again, housing homelessness and safety net, health and nutrition. I'm going to hand it over to Morgan just to do some highlights of our past years' funding, what we've achieved, just really quickly.
Greetings all. So on the next slide, you'll see early childhood, and I'm just going to give you a little snippet of some of the outcomes. But for early childhood, there are about 113 parents and caregivers who became more engaged in their child's learning by participating in a parental support program and other activities as a result of COVID funding. The next category, which is school-aged youth, there are about 136 students who were previously considered chronically absent, so had absentee almost daily, were able to increase their attendance at school as a result of Kofu-funded programs. On the next slide, for our school-aged youth and safety, there are about 282 youth who reported having at least one adult outside of their immediate family who provided practical and emotional support as a result of a Kofu-funded program. With safety net and, sorry, safety net, health and nutrition, there are about 833 individuals who gained confidence in navigating the healthcare and social services systems as a result of participating in programs that focus on benefits and advocacy and referral coordination as a result of Kofu funding. And then, oh, I was going to say lastly, but I lied. Nutrition is our next one, and as a result of Kofu, there was about 304 homebound individuals in 2019 who were able to remain safely in their homes as a result of food deliveries and daily volunteer contact. And then lastly, in our housing and homelessness sector, as a result of Kofu funding, there were 304 households who moved on to permanent housing after receiving assistance from emergency shelter or transitional housing programs as a result of Kofu. Oh, I did lie. I am so sorry. There is one more, and that's older adults. And as a result of Kofu funding, there were 539 participants who reported increased self-sufficiency as a result of senior crisis intervention programming. So what this means, in order to be able to sufficiently support nonprofits in these four priority areas, we Kofu-funded capacity building initiatives. Over time, this has definitely transitioned and changed, and that at the start of Kofu capacity building was in partnership with NU, which is a nonprofit locally in Washtenaw County that supports and provides consultation to nonprofits around governance and strategic planning. And so they worked very closely with Kofu-funded partners and programs. And then over time, we realized that nonprofits needed, well, the capacity, the need out there that nonprofits had around capacity building was huge, and while NU was doing an amazing job, it was just a lot to be able to take on. And so most recently, we shifted capacity building to an online app called Catcha Fire, which allows for nonprofits who signed on to be a part of this initiative to be able to consult with any consultant that was on the app that was locally available and that had an expertise in whatever area they wanted. So it allowed a lot more innovation and a lot less, I guess, structure around the needs and capacity building, knowing that each nonprofit would need something different. And so the next slide, we also talk about systems change efforts that have happened over the years. And so most recently, Kofu, we have invested in a program called Champions for Change, which is a racial equity program that works both with leaders of color and white leaders in Washtenaw County in order to create a more just and equitable Washtenaw County through leadership, as well as you might know of other initiatives that we would consider systems change, which is Buenos Vasinos, which is another partnership in the community that works closely with Latinx community and Spanish speakers in order around education and helping folks to become, feel included in Washtenaw County.
Thanks, Morgan. So one of the transitions that we've been talking about, we've actually been working on for a number of years. So starting in 2019 and then into this year, we have, as Washtenaw coordinated funders, wanted to shift the model to try to center racial equity and actually focus more on addressing race, poverty, and trauma. It's something that we've been wanting to move to, as well as finding ways to simplify the process. And I would also say we've learned, you know, a lot from the pandemic about how to pivot quickly in response, and we'd like to incorporate that and continue to basically set clear outcomes and provide metrics that we can track things. So this is a shift we've been working on. I will tell you that it got slowed down tremendously, obviously, with the pandemic and some of the emergency response that we were doing, as well as our coordinated funding partners. And then another change that happened this summer is that the Ann Arbor Community Foundation had announced to us first, and then more recently to our grantees, that they are exiting the partnership. However, the remaining partners are still interested in sort of moving the partnership in this new direction that would center focus on race, poverty, and trauma, and possibly narrowing the focus, honestly. We had with $4 to $5 million a year, pretty ambitious goals around our outcomes. And in funding that 40 nonprofit, some years it was 50 nonprofit agencies, you're really spreading around the money in a way that it's great that we can support the nonprofits in our community, but if we're truly trying to reach some of our outcomes, you know, it allows us not to focus as directly as we'd like to, to really move the needle. So what we're going to be doing is, right now, we have a coordinated funding is in place for the grantees currently through June 30th of 2021. So we kind of have some decisions to make as the remaining funders over the next few months. So one is if we want to kind of continue in the new direction, do we want to potentially extend those contracts for another six months to allow a little bit more room for some planning and coordination, which staff would recommend at this point, considering we're still doing some COVID response. And obviously, with the surge, there's still a lot that we have to do around the emergency response pieces. So a little more time would allow us to sort of, you know, address those immediate COVID needs and still have some planning time. But we basically want to be able to have a process in place at whatever point that the grant cycle would end. So a lot of this is still in the works, obviously, with some recent changes that we want to let you know, and we hope to be back here, hopefully, in a few months with some of those changes and proposed shifts in the model. So if there are otherwise, we can take some questions if it's appropriate, or else you can contact us directly and we can follow up with you later.
Thank you. We tend not to have question and answer during introductions, but I guess I'd ask if there are councilmen. So for my part, thank you very much to the both of you. If there are council members with questions about the next steps for coordinated funding in this direction, please direct them to Mr. Crawford, and he'll get to the answers right away, or at least in the ordinary course. Again, thank you both.
Thank you.
You bet. We now have organization to council, the oath of office. Ms. Bodrick?
Thank you. If the new council members will raise their right hands and repeat after me, and you can, one at a time. I, Lisa Dish?
I, Lisa Dish.
I, Lynn Song?
I, Lynn Song.
I, Travis Redina?
I, Travis Redina.
I, Jen Ayer?
I, Jen Ayer.
I, Erica Briggs?
I, Erica Briggs.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And then I'll faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Council Member for the city of Ann Arbor, Michigan according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Mayor, you're muted.
I was saying such moving things. The election of the mayor pro tem, resolution electing 2021, 2022 mayor pro tem, and establish in the order of succession for acting mayor. Move by. Councilmember Redina, seconded by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion of the resolution. Councilmember Ramloley?
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, everybody, to our first vote and meeting. And I appreciate this being put forward. I will speak just briefly, I hope, on the nomination of the mayor pro tem. Unfortunately, in this case, I cannot support Councilmember Grand as mayor pro tem. It's unfortunate. We did have a meeting on October 19th where words were exchanged late in the hour, where Councilmember Grand had said existing council members who will continue to serve beyond the November election, whether, if they did not work with her, she'd become a seek-and-destroy missile. And I asked for clarification on that statement. I also asked Mr. Postama to mediate a meeting between myself and Councilmember Grand to get a better understanding of that statement. We had a meeting, and Councilmember Grand has declined to make a statement to clarify what that meant or make an apology. Therefore, based on that, and based on my standards of what elected officials should be doing and how they should lead, especially at a moment, and let's just rewind a few weeks ago, what was going on in our nation politically, a very hostile climate. We had the kidnapping plot foiled by the FBI here. So again, I just put this in the context of everything as to why unfortunately I cannot support my colleague in this motion. Thank you.
For the discussion? Roll call, though, please, starting with Councilmember Ramloley.
Councilmember Ramloley?
No.
Councilmember Hayner?
No.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Griswold?
Yes.
Councilmember Song?
Yes.
Councilmember Grand?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayer?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We now come to public comment reserve time. Public comment reserve time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment reserve time, one needs to contact our city clerk in advance. To speak at public comment reserve time after having reserved such a place, please enter the number on your screen. That is to say, dial 877-853-5247. When you're connected, please enter meeting ID 936-1808-3853. That is 936-1808-3853. When you're connected, please enter *9, *9 to indicate that you wish to speak. When it is your turn to speak, our clerk will identify you by the last three digits of your phone number. Speakers have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time is up. When your time is up, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor to the next speaker. Our first speaker today is Mojon Salabiasfani.
Caller with the phone number ending 941, Ms. Salabiasfani, if you unmute your phone, you can speak. You should be able to unmute your phone by pressing *6.
Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. Well, this first voting was such a farce. I am, I am just beside myself. Just hearing everybody vote with the mayor, that is such a sad situation. And it has come about because Mayor Slate was ramrodded into Ann Arbor City Council with thousands and thousands of dollars of money. Unfortunately, today, money and political power runs America. Money and political power runs America. Mayor of Ann Arbor is now sitting with the majority of people on a city council voting with him. This is a mayor who has been the mayor in this town while dioxide contamination has been growing, while racial segregation has been becoming more and more severe in this town, while rents have been going up, pushing people of lower means out of Ann Arbor. All of that has been happening while Mayor Taylor has been the mayor of Ann Arbor. And now he has his slate ramrodded down our throat with money and political power. This is not a good situation. When money and political power run America, we see what we see. A pandemic that is killing thousands of people, many, many thousands. And we have our Ann Arbor City Council giggling all the way at their meeting. How sad to see that. When political power and money runs a nation like America, you see a white supremacist rapist like Trump get into the highest political office, the White House. When political power and money run a nation, that is when you see a senile rapist war monger, right, like Biden, is cherished only because he has pushed away the white supremacist, replaced him. This is a sad state of affair. You, Mr. Mayor, opened up this town to students to come from all over the United States, opened it up to them when you knew it is going to cause problems with COVID. Now we have thousands of students with COVID sick in this town. You have spread this disease all over. You have also done another thing. You have handpicked people to pack the Human Rights Commission. These are the people who are dogs for Israel. They will do nothing for human rights. They sit and watch a genocide against people of Palestine happen, and they will not say one thing against it. What a sham of a Human Rights Commission. What a sham of a political system. What a sham of a city council. What a sham you've got here. Shame on you, Mayor Taylor. Shame on you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Blaine Coleman.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
You know, for almost 20 years, we've been demanding humanitarian resolutions to offer some symbolic relief to the Palestinian people in the city council. And for almost 20 years, we've been told the city council only deals with city stuff. And now, tonight, you're getting ready to pass this resolution, DC3, which is not city stuff. It's a national resolution. Hey, go right ahead. I have no problem with national resolutions, but if you can pass this DC3 national resolution tonight, you can damn well pass the national resolution that we've been asking for for so many years, the resolution that states simply, "We are against military aid to Israel." I'll repeat it for you, as I have so many times for so many years. "We are against military aid to Israel." That's not hard to remember, seven little words, which would mean the world to the occupied Palestinian people, and which would send a signal that the city council is not- And which would send a signal that this city council is not racist. However, however, if this city council with its new mayor slate, if this city council stonewalls a simple human rights resolution like that in favor of the Palestinian people, if this city council stonewalls that resolution, you will be marked forever as a racist city council. You will be marked forever as a city council that did its part to murder Palestinians in conjunction with Israel, in conjunction with the US Congress, which is giving $38 billion of aid to Israel to keep on reloading and to keep on shooting. Don't mark yourself as a racist city council. And by the way, all your happy talk about being anti-racist, it's a lie. It's a lie. Don't even try it. As long as you keep killing Palestinians and as long as you keep blocking any human rights resolution that might rescue the Palestinian people. Don't even pretend to be anti-racist if you are racist.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Glenn Nelson.
Caller with the phone number ending in 733, Mr. Nelson. Mr. Nelson, if you press *6, you should be able to unmute yourself. Mr. Nelson, go ahead. Mr. Nelson, it looks like your phone is unmuted, but we're not hearing you.
Does this work?
This does.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll start over. This is Glenn Nelson. I'm one of the leaders of Citizens for Mental Health and Public Safety. The topic is the mental health and public safety village. The person I spoke with obviously didn't, we didn't communicate accurately. I want to give an overview of the mental health and public safety village in four quick points plus a brief summary. Number one, the direct and indirect effects of the pandemic are markedly increasing the prevalence and severity of mental health problems, and this is only going to get worse. For example, the ICU beds needed are projected by the University of Washington in Michigan to increase by 82% in the next six weeks. Number two, the county mental health public safety village passed in November 2017, created the potential for council members to address the problems of those living with mental health issues as opposed to voters desired. An independent post-election survey showed that 77% of citizens expected the revenue from the village would be used for mental health and public safety services. A survey of Ann Arbor citizens conducted by the city showed that the highest proportion of the funds citizens believe the highest proportion of funds should go to mental health services. Number three, council members have respected the citizen desires to an extent, while also diverging in some ways. There was an intent resolution passed in 2017 that said affordable housing should get 40% pedestrian bicycle safety, 20% climate action, 40%. The climate action is the contentious part that isn't consistent with mental health and public safety. The most recent budget shows that there are parts that are not consistent with the intent resolution of Barton Superior Dance and the Street Research and Repair. Council members should appropriate all of the funds of the county mental health public safety village for mental health and public safety. This would be consistent with accountability. It's what voters want. It helps Ann Arbor citizens suffering, and it will provide a base for renewal of the village using its purposes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Tom Stalberg.
Caller with the phone number ending in 534, Mr. Stalberg.
Good evening, this is Tom Stalberg. I live at 1202 Traver Street. I'd like to say hello and welcome our new council members, Councilmembers Dish, Song, Regina, Iyer, and Briggs, and I look forward to getting to know all of you. For those who don't know, I've been a real estate professional for almost 30 years. I've been a developer, broker, renovator, and landlord. Been involved with planning commissions and city councils in multiple municipalities over the time and have a bit of experience with planning and zoning issues from my development background. I do have some concerns that I want to talk about on DC 2. Primarily, the warehouse clauses count on reliance on some indirect causes for our affordability and sustainability benefits. Why not bake those directly in? I'm not a big believer in trickle-down economics, never have been. Voodoo economics, as George Bush Senior called them when he was running against Ronald Reagan. Trickle-down housing policies won't work. We won't get the goals achieved that we want if we count on these indirect methods. So why not bake those directly in? We do it in our premiums ordinance, we do it in our PUD ordinance. We are right now in the process of revising our planned project ordinance to do it more directly through that. So why not do it more directly with a transit-supported development district? And my concern is the way the resolution is written is that council isn't directing planning commission to do that, to make it mandatory, to bake it in. But note that DC 4 does direct planning commission to do that. Landholders along transit corridors will see their property values increased by this new ordinance. And I know that firsthand. I've already been approached about a future plan for redeveloping one of our rental properties on the transit corridor. So it's not an unreasonable ask to tell these landholders, me included, speculators, developers, that some of the instant increase in value that we're going to get will have to go to affordable housing or sustainability. We asked the citizens to step up and approve a village to do it, and they did. Now let's ask other stakeholders to kick in some of their windfall and do their part, too. Also, with regards to the various mentions of transit corridors in the current master plan, it's my personal belief that this is insufficient level of specificity to codify into enforceable law. We're combining two steps of the process and putting the master planning and zoning parts into one step where there really should be two steps. And so here's an analogy. The current master plan, we say we should bake some yummy things. People like them. Our zoning ordinance creation step, we're going to write in ingredients and a recipe, but we're missing the step of the master plan with sufficient specificity to say, "What do we want to bake? Cookies, cakes, muffins, all of one, some of each? Should some be nut-free or gluten-free? Do we like chocolate or vanilla, maybe carrot cake?" So we just want to have that conversation with our city and our citizens and not skip that part of the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ralph McGee.
Mr. McGee, phone number ending 556, go ahead.
Can you hear?
Yes, yes, we can.
Hi, Ralph McGee, 5th Ward, 1116 Red Oak. I wanted to also congratulate our incoming council members. And I'm fully aware from exchanges during the primaries with some of you that several of you believed that opponents were exaggerating the potential problems from transit-oriented development and the quadplex proposal that was contained in the A20. I'm also fully aware that elections have consequences, and you new members advocated generally more development because you believe it will result in more affordability and diversity. And I'm aware from watching planning commission meetings that transit order and development is sort of a darling item for them and for staff. The rationale used again and again is that that's how we get to affordability. It's not that simple. First, the developments will be high-end until the demand for high-end is satisfied, if it ever is. That's where the profit is. I've read the articles purporting to show affordability via building market rate, and that only happens after many years of trickle-down filtering. None of that's going to change just because the buildings are near a bus stop. Every one of them, which could otherwise be done as a PUD, will end up at market with $0 going to affordable housing. That issue is being considered by planning commission with respect to planned project developments, but hasn't yet been in the conversation regarding POD. If you really want affordability, you should be encouraging PUDs where you actually get money for that. Next, a zoning district with no geographic boundaries and with no master plan revision is problematic. During the campaign, we were accused of fear-mongering by showing all the major roads that could have six-story or unlimited-height buildings on or near them. Well, which roads are appropriate? Jackson, Washington, which parts? State, Plymouth? In earlier discussions, I've heard Packard, Ann Arbor, Celine, Miller, Stadium. And how far in from the road can these be? Right on the road, quarter-mile, half-mile? This begs for geographic limitation via master plan revision. Next, how do you decide which project to approve? What standards are used? We like it? It has solar panels? It's close to a bus stop? Seriously, in all seriousness, what would the standards be? Without those standards, it's an open invitation to spot zoning all over town. And after a few are approved, what do you say to the developer who gets denied and threatens to sue because the denial appears arbitrary? If you have no objective standards so that it's just totally discretionary, you're leaving yourself open to being forced to allow everything. I hope now with that said, that you'll see what some of us were worried about. I think it seems much more sensible to start small via the DC 4 resolution. Please consider that alternative. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Hughes.
Ms. Hughes, phone number 677.
Hi, I'm Michelle Hughes. I saw this item on the agenda tonight about purchasing vehicles for the police. I also note that this is the first city council meeting of several new council members, so I think this would be a great opportunity to make sure that you have your sights set on defunding the police. Now, when I talk about defunding the police, I'm not talking about haphazardly cutting budget items with no plan. So I don't actually expect you to vote no on the vehicle purchases tonight. When I talk about defunding the police, I'm talking about coming up with a new way to do public safety, which better addresses the actual needs in our community. What if people had housing, healthcare, and mental health care? What if people didn't get forced by economics to stay in bad living situations? What if we took a harm reduction approach to drugs? What if we redesigned our roads so that by their design, they encouraged safe driving instead of encouraging unsafe driving and then relying on enforcement? Now, I went to a meet and greet with Police Chief Cox where he said that the overwhelming majority of calls to the police are about disputes between neighbors. What if we had unarmed mediators trained in de-escalation? What if we looked at the Kahoots program in Eugene, Oregon, as a model? They have mental health professionals who respond to calls with police. These programs sound expensive, but I'll remind you that we spend $30 million per year on police. If we put that money instead into programs like these, it would go a long way. Now, you may ask, why take money from the police budget? If we had another source of money, couldn't we have these programs and then continue to do policing as we have been? The reason I'm suggesting taking money from the police is that they are not a helpful or even neutral resource. The good work that we see them do is only when they perform a bad approximation of the social services I listed above. But they also create a climate of fear among some of our black residents and other minorities. I've heard many stories of people in our community, of black parents who've trained their kids how not to get killed, arrested, or harassed by police. I've heard many stories of people from our community, of black people who are consistently harassed by our police as they go about their normal business. This is a service that we're paying $30 million for, and it's not a neutral thing. Let's use that money instead in a way that serves our community's actual needs. The City of Ann Arbor recently signed a three-year contract with our police union, so that's your deadline. Make sure that by the time that contract is up, we have alternatives in place. If we sign another contract with police, we'll be asking them to do a very different job. To the new city council members, you'll have a lot of work to do, even if you just do the routine business of the city, but you must not lose sight of your duty to change things for the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there communications from council? Councilmember Ramlo.
Thank you, Mayor. Just echoing what many people have already said, welcome to all the new members of council. Looking forward to learning a lot of different things and different backgrounds and different points of views, and hopefully it makes this body a much stronger body with all those diverging viewpoints. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Briggs for coming to my constituent hour that I threw last week at West Park. An impromptu opportunity to engage with our community. Had a handful of folks come out and practiced safe distance and had a good conversation and robust dialogue between different parts of our community. So again, I appreciate Councilmember Briggs for coming out, and hopefully we can have many more of those once things allow themselves to resume to a safe level. Also, I hope everybody in the community is okay from the powerful storms that came in yesterday. I know a lot of people in the 5th Ward were without power. And we got an update today from our city administrator, appreciate that. I know temperatures are dropping tonight, it's rather cold, and hopefully people are where it's warm and safe. And then finally, just with our healthy streets and our neighborhoods, I've noticed especially since the windstorm, there's a lot of those barricades that are knocked down, misplaced, out of place, and frankly, somewhat dangerous. I'm not sure if we can get out there and pick up and do the maintenance on those barricades that are in the neighborhood streets, but I feel at this point they need some attention. So hopefully staff can get around to doing that this week as it's supposed to warm up and get a little nicer. Thanks, and you all have a great meeting.
Councilmember Griswold.
Welcome to the new council members. I've had an opportunity to talk to and meet all of the new council members. And one thing I would say as a member of the Administration Committee, if you see something that looks like it could be improved or you're wondering why we do it the way we do it, please let me know because there may be a valid reason, but there may also be an opportunity to improve it, and that's what I'd like to do. I'd also like to say thanks to everyone who participated in caucus last night and apologize to those who were not able to call in. We did have some technical difficulties with Zoom. I was working with staff first thing this morning on that, and hopefully it will run smoothly in the future. We've talked in the past about a couple of the privileged and confidential emails that are in the new council orientation at the Administration Committee. I'm going to bring up two of those to have them written in such a way that they can be released to the public because I think that they are topics that are of interest to the public. One is the Open Meetings Act in FOIA, and possibly it could also be updated to include the constraints of Zoom. And the other one is the Conflict of Interest and Ethics Advice for Council Members. I think the public wants to know what rules we function by, and this is an excellent opportunity to do that. and this is an excellent opportunity to do that. And lastly, I want to say that the transportation plan is in its draft state, and it is out on the website. It'll also be reviewed by the Transportation Commission on Wednesday night at 7:00. I'm no longer on the Transportation Commission, but I'm definitely still interested in transportation planning, especially this plan because it's based on Vision Zero. And I know everyone's heard me talk about Vision Zero in the past, and I'm probably more excited about it than anyone in Ann Arbor. But that's because we're going to transition from being ideology-driven about transportation issues to truly data-driven. And we're going to use a framework that will ensure that we reduce our crash rate as other communities have throughout the world using Vision Zero. So if anyone would like to know more about Vision Zero, just contact me. Thank you.
Councilmember Heiner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a minute, like I've done some other times, and dedicate my moment of silence to a couple of folks who passed this last weekend. Meant a lot to me and the community. First was Larry Hunter, former city councilperson Larry Hunter, sort of a king among men, and he will be missed. And the second person is Jennifer Holliday Chanel. And you know, all I can say about those folks is they will be missed. Rest in peace and power and love. People really changed a lot of people's lives. And you know, as we start this new segment of council here, I've been thinking about this for a long time, that we haven't really done this as a tradition here at council, and I don't think there's any need to do it as a tradition, but I just wanted to speak to this myself that I think it's important that we acknowledge some things about our city. And so I want to read the statement that I, to that effect, that I acknowledge that the land that the City of Ann Arbor sits on was obtained likely in unconscionable ways from indigenous peoples. The City of Ann Arbor occupies the ancestral, traditional, and contemporary lands of the Anishinaabe, the Three Fires Confederacy of O'Dowas, Jibwe, and Powhatomi peoples. The taking of this land was formalized by the Treaty of Detroit in 1807. As one of our primary tasks on council is consideration of land use, we must recognize that this land does not belong to us. On Indigenous Peoples' Day in 2020, Detroit City Council passed a resolution renaming Detroit Waiaita'noa', where that articulates Detroit and its relationship to the water. And I found that particularly interesting, not only because of our responsibilities elected officials to protect our Great Lakes water resources, which includes the Huron River, but because the Anishinaabe M'auan, or the Anishinaabe language, differentiates between animate and inanimate. Trees, rivers, animals are animate objects sacred with life and spirit, and man-made objects are inanimate. Unfortunately, it's clear that our modern society commodifies one and destroys the sacred. It destroys the sacred and worships the inanimate. Woodlands, water, and fertile soils have all become commodities from which corporations seek to extract maximum profit. I acknowledge that these are not commodities, but nature's gifts in need of stewardship, and I pledge to act as steward and caretaker to the best of my abilities, and furthermore, to listen to and heed indigenous communities and leadership. So thank you for listening to that.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. There's just some construction that's happening in Ward Four this coming week. Tomorrow, resurfacing work is going to be happening on Marshawn and Winstead, starting today, I guess it was. Yeah, starting today on Winstead, Tuesday and Wednesday on Marshawn, and continuing through this week. And then we have some resurfacing work on Yeoman Court starting tomorrow, November 17. And we had some work done just last week on Amesbury, Brayside, and Worthington. So there's lots happening in Ward Four with getting our streets fixed. Thanks.
Councilmember Radina.
Thank you, and I hope this is a good opportunity for this, but I just wanted to take a moment and briefly thank the residents of Ward Three, since this is my first meeting here, for placing their trust in me and electing me as their representative on council. I feel incredibly honored and grateful that my neighbors have entrusted me with this awesome responsibility and an amazing opportunity to impact our city. But I also wanted to thank all of you, my fellow council members. Over the last few months, I've had the opportunity to meet with most of you, and I really look forward to working with all of you to address some of the critical issues facing our city. I know that there will be a lot of times when we agree, and on those few occasions when we do disagree, I just want you to know that I will always strive to approach our conversations with civility and respect, and so that even in disagreement, we can continue to work together on the next issue that comes before us. And so I know that you all know that that was a cornerstone of kind of my campaign and something that I hope to bring to this table as we start another term here. So thank you all, and again, thank you to my Ward Three neighbors for this amazing opportunity to serve the city that we all love. Thank you.
Councilmember Ayer.
Thank you. Similarly, I just wanted to make a few comments along the same lines as Travis. But first, I want to thank Councilmember Heiner for his comments about the history of our land as somebody who's married to a member of the Sioux Tribe of the Chipewa Indians. So I, yeah, just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to serve the residents of Ward Four and the city. It feels like the August election was a long time ago. So much has happened in our country in those intervening months, and some of it great and some of it not so great. But one thing I appreciate about the City of Ann Arbor is that unlike what's happening in Washington right now, after an election, we come together and we get to work. And so I'm really excited to get to work on the issues that the voters expressed so overwhelmingly that they want us to work on, things like affordable housing and safer streets and responsible development and much more. And I'm excited that we have one of those issues here on our very first agenda tonight. So you know, with a nod of appreciation for the service of my predecessor, Jack Eaton, I just want to say I'm looking forward to working with all of you here on council, both new members and existing previous members. And I'm excited to get to work. Thank you.
Councilmember Briggs.
On that theme, I would also like to start with just a little bit of gratitude, of course, to the Fifth Ward, to everybody around this virtual table for warmly welcoming us, and also very much to staff who's put together an outstanding orientation process for us over the past month or so and worked to get us up to speed. So thanks.
Councilmember Dish.
Not to sound like a broken record, I do want to express my gratitude first and foremost to the voters of Ward One. And I am very excited to represent you and hope to do many of the things that you very much valued about my predecessor, Anne Bannister, and take you on courses that are unique to me. I want to thank my colleagues on council, and I look forward to this night's meeting, and I look forward to it being short.
Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. So I want to welcome all the new council members. Thrilled that you're all here. And one thing I just wanted to acknowledge this week was that I've been getting some emails and messages about actions that I myself am taking and that we are taking as a council to be explicitly anti-racist. And I appreciate those messages, but don't have a quick response in my pocket yet because I think that represents a lot of work and don't want to speak for this entire group. But you know, do look forward. One of the things that I admired about so many of the candidates in the discussion that we had in this last year was explicitly about how we can be anti-racist and look through the lens of equity in what we do. So I'm looking forward to doing that, but will not have... So I do apologize to people in the community who've reached out so far. I don't have a list just yet, but I will be working on it. Thanks.
Councilmember Song.
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity to represent Ward Two. I'm really excited for this work. Working alongside Kathy Griswold also here on Ward Two, I've been hearing from a lot of neighbors who are looking forward to, as Councilwoman Dish pointed to, shorter meetings. I'm looking forward to more diverse representation with public comments. Earlier, Teresa Gilati had mentioned one of the projects funded by Kofu was Leaders for Change. I'm actually in front of a poster that was created by a fellow from New, Yan Azaro, and her work is outside of Liberty Square Park. And it basically outlines the 14-year difference, life expectancy difference depending on area code. So it seems like there's a bunch of different issues and worlds kind of colliding in one meeting here. So I was really pleased to hear Teresa mention that. Really important work coming from the county and from different funding partners to support racial equity awareness, art, and getting that discussion going. I'd like to further that, too. Coming from the Library Board, all the trustees are completing unbiased training that we had also asked of management and staff to do in our previous year with our strategic plan. If we could ask for staff to do that work, we did it ourselves. So I'm excited for this discussion, and I look forward to hearing from folks from throughout the community. Thanks.
Further communication from council. For my part, I would also like to welcome members returning and new. We have a lot of work, a lot of momentum, I believe, on projects of broad community interest and also lots of opportunities. We obviously, with the passage of Proposition C, have an opportunity to do incredible things with respect to affordable housing, and I'm hoping that this group will take that charge. We have an A20 plan that is visionary and detailed and ready to roll. And so I'm hoping too that that's something that we can do as a council to move with a great deal of speed towards our carbon neutrality goal, while at the same time, you know, doing everything we can on the daily to do the work that we do to provide basic services. Because fundamentally, you know, local government is about, you know, improving basic services and enhancing quality of work. We need to do that for our residents, and we need to do that naturally through staff. You know, I think that's one thing that I'm looking forward to, to continue, is to have this council work with staff because frankly, everything we do, "we" as in scare quotes, it's done by staff, and our staff is outstanding up and down the line. And you know, in addition to y'all having my gratitude, they have it doubly so. I'd like to have a couple of announcements. First, with respect to the LGBTQ liaison to the mayor's office with the transition to elected office by Travis Radina, we are going to have a new LGBTQ liaison to the mayor's office, and that is by appointment, Naomi Goldberg. And I'm incredibly excited to work with her and to provide an opportunity for members of the public who have things to say about how the LGBTQ experience in Ann Arbor can be improved. To please hop on the website at the city and contact Naomi Goldberg and/or myself, and we're going to do what we can to get it done. You know, the LGBTQ liaison to the mayor's office is a result of the human rights campaigns, municipal equality index, which identified that as an important feature of promoting LGBTQ rights in a community. And I'm delighted that we're going to be moving it forward again this time with Ms. Goldberg. Then I'd like to present the following nominations for council's consideration at the December 7 meeting. That is to the Board of Review, William Brogan to the Board of Review Two, Alice Owings and Kirk Zell to the City Planning Commission, Sadira Clark and Juan Mu Lee to the Economic Development Corporation, Dana Thompson to the Astoria District Commission, Anna Epstein, Robert White to the Transportation Commission, Arlie Aldemar. I'll note that Ms. Goldberg is identified in this set of nominations. It is not a function of the nomination. It's a mere appointment. We have before us the consent agenda. I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda, moved by Councilmember Griswold, seconded by Councilmember Grant. Discussion of a consent agenda. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I'd like to pull CA1 for discussion.
CA1, Councilmember Lohi.
Thank you. Can I pull CA10 for question or two? Hopefully staff's around.
CA10, further discussion of the consent agenda. Councilmember Heiner.
Thank you. Just a comment on CA2. As we continue to, you know, update and maintain our GIS systems here, I'm hoping that... I spoke with Mr. Delacorte, and one of the things I hope to achieve in my next two years here on council is helping coordinate the city's assets and asset management and tying it to our GIS systems. I think it will prove invaluable for our long-term planning operations should we revisit in part or in whole the master planning process, which I hope that we are able to get to. You know, it should serve us admirably as well there. It's $50,000. I'm loathe to spend any money right now, but it's such a vital system for our folks internally that we must do it. And so I just, you know, thanks for support on this, and let's see if we can, you know, make some additional... We can bring some additional value out of that already valuable resource. Thank you.
Further discussion of the consent agenda. I will note that at least on my agenda, CA9 is not stricken, but that the consent agenda does not include CA9.
Could you... Well, yeah, it's not stricken on mine, but you're saying it is not as part of this vote?
That is correct.
Okay.
There's a note that it's deleted from the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
It's not... The text does not strike through. I just wanted to set it for clarity. Further discussion of the consent agenda, with the exception of CA1, CA10, and of course, CA9. All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? It's approved with 11 council members present, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement with respects to CA3, CA4, CA5. CA1, resolution to prohibit on-street parking on the north side of Scioto Church Road between South Maple Road and Greenview Drive, moved by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Heiner. Discussion, please, of CA1. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. The information that was in... It's been a number of months since the public meeting. And in the packet attachments, the map didn't go as far as Maple. And I had a question based on an email from a constituent. How is this reconfiguration going to impact the intersection at Scioto Church and Maple? Are we going to lose the turn lane at that intersection? I don't know.
This is Nick Hutchinson, city engineer. I'm going to turn that over to our project manager, Jane Allen, to make sure that we get that answer correctly. Jane, if you want to jump in here. Okay, I don't know that she's here. But I believe my understanding is the bike lane would extend all the way to the Maple Road intersection, that that right-turn lane is, volume-wise, is not necessary for turning movements. So...
I'm sorry I'm here. I just...
There's Jane. Okay, good. Go ahead, Jane.
The design right now shows that we can take the bike lane to the intersection, and then we would offset the pavement markings, and then we would have like a bike box that would cross over to the south side of the road. And that way, the turning movements from the right-turn lanes, it would be a through and a right-turn lane. We've had traffic evaluation done, and we don't think there needs to be a designated right-turn lane just because it's kind of busy at the peak hours. But that would be a lane apart from the bike lane. That would be... The bikes would be away from the turner.
Okay. Okay, and then my only other question, and I suppose this might be relevant to other projects that do this kind of a survey. A2 Open City Hall that's broken down from citywide to Ward Four. I'm just curious, are you literally using the map designations of Ward Four? Like, how do people identify themselves in participating in that survey? Are they identified by address? Like, how do you... Do you follow what I'm saying? Like, we had a significant response on A2 Open City Hall, citywide, and then another significant response online, Open City Hall, from Ward Four, and much less of a response from the residents nearby. And the residents nearby was like, not as overwhelming support. So I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand, like, Ward four stretches right all the way to Packard. So somebody, somebody on Packard can participate in open city hall and, um. Well, I'm interested in the logistics of that.
The public meeting had a mailing of over 500 people for all the neighborhoods that were south of Scioto Church and just north that would be affected by the side streets. So those, and then, of course, the public meeting is open to anyone. So other people besides that mailing was, could have arrived. Then the project website was created. There was a link to the open city hall, and I do believe anyone who's registered on open city hall gets a link to any new surveys. So that's why it could be citywide involvement. And then, as far as the postcard mailings that we sent out, they were only to the adjacent property owners of the existing on-street bike lane. They did not go to the neighborhood.
To, Councilmember, to answer your question, I don't think staff knows the intricacies of open city hall, how the identification is done, but we will get that answer and share it with you.
I appreciate that, and I also appreciate the, um, the amount of effort that goes into having these public meetings. Like, I, I'm, I'm glad for it to be said in a, in a meeting like this, that, you know, like 500 mailings went out. Because that, I, I do appreciate that the city is doing its best to try to cast a wide net and, um. Yeah, anyway, I, thank you. You've answered my questions. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Hayner.
Thanks. If I could add one more question, since you, you, you folks came out tonight. Is the, when you talk about like the traffic study for the right turn lane as an example, is the potential or likely approval of the nearby Valhalla rezoning request intended? Would that have any effect on this chunk of street right here? Is, I mean, that's, we're talking about the potential for dropping a lot of, lot of traffic, a lot of population right there at the end of that street. Does, is that, is there like a, do you guys do a projection of projected, you know, potential for, for traffic in those neighborhoods? I mean, sort of back in the envelope or?
I, the, the traffic projections are based on, I mean, they're, they're based on actual traffic counts. In this case, I don't know when they were taken, but they were probably done pre-COVID. The, that development, if it's, if it comes online, will, would not contribute a so much traffic to the Maple Scioto Church intersection that it would make a significant difference. But generally speaking, when we do, you know, when we do these traffic studies, we try to account for any, you know, additional growth in general.
Okay, thank you. That gets back to my, my desire for GIS. And we can project, you know, few, project future planning or current master planning. I guess the only other thing I wanted to say was I encourage my colleagues to look at some of the results of, that were published in response to the questions, and thank you, Mr. Crawford, for answering our questions again. You can see by, one, one very specific one stood out, of course, and that is the, the person who really won't have a place to park once this happens, a second vehicle for a larger home. And, and so I think what this kind of lays out for us, and some of us on our first meeting, is that we have these situations before us where we have opportunities to make changes to our, our traffic systems and network. And, you know, the result of those changes can be extraordinary inconveniences for some folks that are most directly in the affected areas. And I think you saw the vehement opposition from one homeowner, and, you know, can't blame them. I mean, we experienced the same thing, unfortunate, and where I live, in that we have a situation, we have a shared driveway, it's very compact lots and small houses. And so we're able to, you know, park our cars off the street. But, you know, we can't have book group or things like that anymore. They all park in the school on walk now. And that's fine, you know, it's fine for us, but it's not fine for everybody. And so I just encourage you to look at some of those responses and, and you really see that. You know, I, I guess, to paraphrase the mayor, there is disruption going on. And some of these folks are not, not going to be happy however we decide this tonight. And our apologies to them, or mine at least. Thank you.
Councilmember Griswold.
I'm really happy to hear that we're going to have a bike box at this intersection. So thank you for that. And to follow up on what Councilmember Hayner was talking about. Based on the information I have, the one neighbor who protested has a foster home with foster children and social workers and other support staff coming to the home. And I'm wondering how far that home is from one of the side streets where parking would be available.
If you can hold on just a moment, I can pull up a map and get you a number, but I don't have the number off the top of my head here.
Absolutely. Unless you have anything else, Councilmember will run to Councilmember Mlouy and Mr. Hutchinson will. Councilmember Mlouy.
Thank you, Mayor, and appreciate the discussion on this. This is a, a road that I bike often when I leave out of town. And it's good to see it getting some attention. It's, it's a, it's in horrible shape. I typically will take the bike path or the path that's to the south of, of the road to get to Maple. It starts at Greenview and then gets, gets you down to Maple. Sometimes you run into people coming the other way, but it's better than the condition of the road and the hazards it poses. My question is, the, the interface and the interchange at the intersection. It's, as a cyclist, it's, I'd much rather cross 94 using that pedestrian bridge versus going over the, the bridge where cars go over. Will there any be any kind of treatment or anything else to safely get people to the other side, to the south side, from the north side? I don't know if there's anything creative there to be done. And then, you know, just to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Hayner, I know there's going to be some people who are, who are going to be upset with this. Typically, when it comes to these decisions, I defer to my council reps to gauge the support that I'll have for these kind of projects. But I'll, the, the council reps have to say in Ward four when it comes to this. But I know living on Seventh Street, it's very difficult when you don't have on-street parking for many reasons that have been stated. I, I really don't have very many people come over because of the, the parking situation. And so when they do, it's, it's very tricky, to say the least. So this is a huge inconvenience to the people that are affected by it. But again, I defer my, my council reps and then again, take that answer if there is one about the interchange. Thank you.
Mr. Hutchinson?
If I can jump in the, at, in terms of people getting, getting across the highway there, if that's what you were saying. Yeah. If, you know, if, if bicyclists are more comfortable on the, on the, the walkway that's across the highway, they can cross at Maple, there's a signalized intersection there with a protected pedestrian phase, which bicyclists can also use. For bicyclists that are more comfortable on the road, they can, you know, they can act as a vehicle going through that intersection, across the bridge. And when you get to the other side, they're, you know, out in the rural section outside the city, there, there's no bike lanes out there either, so they'd be riding in the road or on the shoulder anyway. So it, it's, it's up to the comfort level of the bicyclist, you know, in question whether they want to use the road or that, or that bridge that goes across.
It's just not very marked, it's not marked very well. I was just wondering if there's a way of kind of signaling to those cyclists, there is a safer option if you just look, look over that. I, I understand that. And as somebody who's traveled, I apologize, someone who's traveled on, on very stressful roads as a cyclist, that crossing that bridge is, is, is a 10 out of 10.
Mr. Hutchinson, do you have a answer to Councilmember Griswold?
Yeah, I do. The, I did a quick measurement. If I have the right house picked out, it looks like it's a maximum of 350 feet to the nearest intersection.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dish.
Two things. First, I'm sorry, I've had to turn off my video because my internet is so unstable and I've been booted out of the meeting twice now. So I'm trying to manage that. It's, I guess it's windy, so here we are in the north side. I noticed that on one of the postcards, one of the people said that they would want limited parking on the side streets on Waltham and Covington if this bike lane were put in. And I wondered how likely such a request would be to be granted, since one of the things that staff did note was that the alternative for these people who are losing their on-street parking would be to park on the side streets. So I wondered, would it be, obviously, this is a suggestion that a person put on a postcard, not a staff recommendation or anything like that. But is there any, would that be something we'd be likely to grant or that neighbors would be likely to pursue?
Um, it, it's not something that we could just grant in terms of, I, I'm not sure exactly what the, what the request was, but we couldn't reserve parking on the side streets for the houses up front on Scioto Church. For example, the parking spots on the street are available to anybody that wants to use them. The parking on those side streets is not so heavily used that any someone that, that's on Scioto Church would have trouble finding a parking space there, though.
Great. Yeah, this was not a person on Scioto Church asking this. This was someone on the side street saying, I don't want my street to become a parking lot, but you have just answered that concern. Thank you.
Certainly. And, and I would say too, that the, the likelihood of that happening is pretty small because of the fact that the parking that's on Scioto Church right now is very sparsely used.
The discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? CA 10, resolution to approve amendment number one to the personal services agreement with Julie Roth for support related to administering the Ann Arbor Solarize program in the amount of $30,000, moved by Councilmember Mlouy, seconded by Councilmember Song. Discussion, please, of CA 10, Councilmember Mlouy.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I was relieved to see the updated version of this agenda have a different figure put in for this contract. Initially, one of the earlier versions had this contract, this, this particular part of it to be 50,000 instead of 30,000, which kind of raised some alarm with myself at least. But aside from that, the $30,000 mark is, is a little bit more easier for me to digest. Then I read an MLive article on, on Friday, Friday the 13th regarding solar installations and companies who are being threatened be pushed out of, out of Michigan because of the caps on distributed generation. And I was wondering if Dr. Stoltz could maybe advise us on, on that looming threat? How, how significant is it? Is it a consideration on, on the caps that we are nearly at currently at 1%? So if you could, Dr. Stoltz, thanks.
Yeah, Councilmember Mlouy, thank you for the really astute question because this is a very important topic. It's something that we had included in a policy memo we sent a few months ago as one of the items we're watching. We've actually testified before the Senate Committee on this topic. And we're working with a number of different allies to try to get the distributed generation cap removed or at least significantly increased. DT service territory, we're not far from hitting that cap because renewable energy is viable. And it makes sense for many, many people to move forward. So this remains something that we're actively working on legislative change for with the Michigan Public Service Commission, the utilities and other partners.
Would Julie Ross' work continue if these caps were, were, were met? Would, would the work continue to be done or does, does this type of work be placed on pause if, if we hit those, those caps?
Another good question. So what the cap is about is what the utilities will pay you back, right? So they don't have to pay you a fair rate, the, the inflow-outflow rate if, if you, if we meet that cap or once we exceed that cap. Now, it's not clear. Utilities have signaled they'll still accept solar and compensate for it. They're not required to do that. So what we likely will see happen is more solar and more storage. Because why would you send money back if you don't know what you're getting from the grid? So what you'll, what we're, and we're already seeing this start to happen anyway. So it won't impact necessarily Julie's work. If anything, it'll just limit the work to be solar and batteries so that you're not sending it back to the grid. You're capturing as much of the benefit of that solar system as you can. Does that make sense?
It does. And, and so, yeah, I appreciate you enlightening us once again. So I take it the technology in the market is progressively moving along in, in terms of storage capacity.
Yeah, it's a beautiful thing. I will tell you, I'm looking at it at my home as we speak. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hayner.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. If I could, Dr. Stoltz, so I ask a few questions, which I appreciate you answering about the previous success or the current success, I guess we should say, of this program. And that's great. And I kind of feel responsible for this because I, I, you know, Ms. Roth is a constituent. And I encourage her to get involved and actually went to the first meeting at her house. And, you know, it's pretty interesting. People seem pretty excited and clearly it's been working out for us. So, so that's great. I noticed in the contract that it speaks to the, the structure needs to launch a formally two solarized program and then to, to continue to administer the program. But it speaks to the first quarter of 2021. Would you say that we're a little behind because of COVID on that? Should we change that?
Can you clarify for me? Because I'm not sure.
Well, in her contract, in the original contract, it expect, some of her work product is being requested as providing the city with the structure needed to launch a formal A two solarized program. And then further down, it says that she will assist in administering the program. And then further from, and that was, the date given for that was the first, the launching of the A two solarized program was the first quarter of fiscal year 21, which I believe we're in. And so I assume that COVID has delayed that. And should that be gone back and updated, the expectations for her work?
Happy, happy to do that. What I would say is, we actually are having more sales if not, and so the program is just shifting. So we're refining the program based on lessons learned. As you know, the first pilot was at Ms. Roth's house in which we helped create it. And then we've run all eight of the other programs this year. And so each program continues to be refined and updated. And so we're, I mean, the iteration of that program design is part of what Ms. Roth's job will be, to really formalize and make sure this lives and adjusts. And that's true always. Excuse me, looking at next year, going to a different federal tax rate because it'll drop. This year it's 26%, next yearly 22%. And so the, we anticipate the market will shift. So that's.
So you say that goal has been met, basically, then, instead of we need to extend it? Okay. So how about the extension of this program to EV purchases or bulk EV purchases or energy efficiency or fundraising and the other aspects of that? Is she anticipating, I mean, are we basically looking at an FTE here in the future? Or is this still going to be a contractual thing?
No, it's, it's possible. Those are conversations we've had, and we've decided at this point, we don't know what the federal administration is going to do around tax incentives. What I anticipate is next year is going to be intense. People are going to try to take advantage of them, but we sort of need a signal to understand. And then we need the flexibility to be able to pivot. And I could imagine Ms. Roth being an exceptional hire full-time if that aligns with her goals and professional priorities.
Okay. And then, again, I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep our Q and A even under three minutes. So it speaks to the great savings or the aggregated savings that folks have had in buying these systems, a $250,000 worth of savings. So the total amount of residents' money that was spent on these systems is some, you know, multiple of that, right? And so would you say as we switch to battery and we get less of a kickback from DTE and so on, like, that the cost of entry is obviously going to go up? We know battery technology is expensive. Is, how are we going to bring equity to this? Like, I went to Julie's first meeting and I spoke to the, one of the folks called me back. I spoke to him one time and, and I actually didn't get any responses from that. But I did my own look into it and, you know, it's pretty expensive to do this. And so, you know, is, is there a, is there a future where solar is for everyone and not just people who can afford it? Especially since, you know, I know we, we looked at separating the improvement taxes and stuff from it. And how do you feel about that? Is there a way to somehow take that savings and pass it on even more so? So people that are well-sighted and want to be part of this but can't afford it can, can be part of it?
Excellent questions and 100% yes. Let me take one and say the batteries are part of the program. So most of the vendors offer the discounts on the batteries as well. So those help reduce the, the cost of entry into that. Second, this is but one of the strategies to help our community access solar. Not everyone can. It's an expensive thing to put on your roof. You might have beautiful trees which make it so that you don't have good solar coverage. So we're also working on programs around community solar. And we have an initiative called Solar Faithful, which allows congregants, individuals in their house of worship to be able to make investments in the house of worship getting solar. And they're buying into that system and getting the payback from it. We're working with Michigan Saves and others to explore how we might be able to do that on other community assets. You could imagine maybe the libraries. You could imagine maybe the libraries, where if you can't put solar on your roof, but you want to contribute and get the financial payback of it, you might be able to make an investment. The Solarize is one program in our suite of programs to bring solar to everybody.
Good. Thank you.
Mayor, you're muted.
Um, Ms. Bowdre, I note that Councilmember Dish has been coming in and out. Is she, uh, is she here? Is she on?
Mayor, she is, um, I've renamed her. She's on a phone now.
All right.
So you won't see video, but I've named her phone with her, um, it says Councilmember Dish. Mayor, you're muted again.
Thank you. I don't see her on my, um, on my panelists.
I've got her on mine. You might want to make your panel larger and see if she pops in.
No, I don't mean in terms of the, uh, the, in the panelist panel on the right.
She's on the attendee list.
I just don't want to call on her.
Yeah, there's, there isn't any way for me to make her a panelist, um, but I have her as she is allowed to speak.
All right. So I guess, um, Ms., uh, you're probably Councilmember Dish.
I'm.
Well, I can hear you right now. Um.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm logging back in on my own computer. The problem seems to be that my city issued computer, it's just not liking my internet. So, um, I'm, I'm logging in on my own computer and I'll, I'll be there in a minute.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, I'm so sorry about this.
No worries. Councilmember Nelson.
I, I just wanted to give a shout out to Julie Roth, because I, um, it's unusual that we have an agenda item that's so specific to a person like this. And it just happens that my husband and I attended meetings for the Solarize Program, and we have nothing but wonderful things to be, about, things to say about how Julie Roth is engaging, um, with members of the community and responsive to questions. And it's, it's really good thing for anybody who's not, um, investigated this or tried to participate in this, I really encourage you. Um, she's, she's led some really excellent meetings. Thank you.
For the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Uh, we have before us the minutes of the work session of October 13 and the regular session meeting minutes of October, of November 5, 2020. May I have a motion, please, to approve these minutes? Moved by Councilmember Grand, seconded by Councilmember Umlawi. Discussion of the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. C1, in ordinance to amend sections 5.16.6 and 5.18.4 of chapter 55 Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Hayner, seconded by Councilmember Griswold. Discussion, please, of C1. Councilmember Hayner.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, we, um, uh, had a short conversation on everything that was coming up on our agenda at my, I guess, my, now my final, uh, council or Energy Commission meeting. And, um, you know, they, I asked a couple of questions about it, and I think it's great that we're, we're taking a look at this and, and allowing, uh, uh, you know, putting the space into our, into our, uh, planning that, that people can do this and that they can retrofit this. And my only concerning question was put forward was that, um, uh, you know, we speak to flat roofs, which is, uh, you know, commercial buildings primarily, uh, even, even apartment buildings and so on. And, uh, but not, not peaked roofs. And so I just, I asked that in the future, they might consider that. Um, some of the consideration and calculations that we did said it's not really a big deal. Uh, you know, with, with a commercial building, you're 12 feet over, it's, it's a lot different than being, uh, you know, 12 inches over or even six inches or whatever, depending on how the rake of your roof and, and such is. So I just wanted to point out that we only speak to flat roofs in this. And, um, that's all. It's just not as thorough as it maybe should be in the future. So, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I, um, I, it was a little frazzling to me to have the, the schedule shifted this week, and I meant to get a question in this morning that I didn't quite get it there. Um, the packet suggested that there was one particular project that motivated the change about requirements for site plan review. And I was just wondering if, um, i- if we could just mention what that project was.
Sorry about that. I'm moving over the, um, city planners just one second.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the, we were approached by, or I'm Brett Leonard, I'm the planning manager. We were approached by, uh, Versity Ford, um, who was interested in, um, installing, uh, basically, um, covers, carports that would include solar chargers for their, vehicles that they were marketing and onsite, um, per our ordinance. Um, we, that would require site plan review, which is a pretty significant process for a site to go through. And so that initiated, uh, a conversation, um, with my colleagues to, um, you know, to explore our A2 zero goals, um, generally provide more opportunities for solar panels, and that was the origination of this. So, um, I, I can't say frankly if they're still interested in it. I think that they are. They've been sort of monitoring the progress of that. Um, but that was the initial inquiry. Um, they were not interested in going through the full site plan process in order to accommodate that. We, um, thought it was worthwhile to look at this as, uh, an amendment to benefits, uh, a variety of sites.
So did the, um, it's, I, I appreciate the way this is drafted pretty narrowly. Um, does, i- is the 10,000 square feet, was that a number that was relative to their particular project?
No, that was actually, um, added at the planning commission level. Uh, originally, we had, um, kept, um, no limit on it. And I think that there was just some recognition of, um, that would provide a lot of opportunity for, um, these to be installed on sites. It would provide a limiting, um, some sort of cap. And I think frankly, it was just a bit of a, you know, let's start incrementally from a community experience perspective to see how, how these go. That would be an easy number to adjust relative to the other requirements of the future.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I asked that question just because I, um, I remember that we had an amendment recent, somewhat recently, I guess, that was about large parking areas. And really, it was pretty pinpointed to Briarwood Mall, it felt like. But, um, so, okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate you answering my question. Thanks.
For the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? C1 is approved. DC1, resolution to approve 2021 Council Community, uh, Council Committee Appointments. Moved by Councilmember Grand, seconded by Councilmember Dina. Discussion, please, of DC1. Councilmember Hayner.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to say I wasn't sure exactly, um, uh, what the routine was for this. So then when I first began on council, we did it in a little different order. And I was also told by the outgoing mayor pro tem that there was the opportunity for some kind of application of seniority in the request for, um, positions or assignments, rather. And, um, in this case, it appears to not be the case because not only was the notion that, which is something I've also been told, that if you are sitting on a, uh, board or commission or appointment, you're able to keep it if you want. Um, and, and that, so I kind of got a mix, I guess, when they were assigned. I, I kind of came out of this with a mix. I didn't keep some of the ones I wanted. I didn't get some of the ones I wanted. Um, and so, you know, I just wanted to express my concern over that. The other, uh, thing I wanted to say is that I, uh, I noticed that there's no Rules Committee, uh, positions being assigned. And I know an email from, uh, CM Graham and yourself, you suggested that we were going to dissolve the Rules Committee or perhaps incorporate it into another committee. And so I assume that's what's happening here since they aren't, uh, you know, there aren't, uh, people assigned to the Rules Committee. But I wanted to kind of express my concern that, um, these committees were folded up without a proper discussion of the entire body. And so it kind of, not only does it take away three or four opportunities for folks to serve, but it, um, you know, it leaves us begging the question, where are we going to discuss rules? So I just wanted to, to bring that out. And as a result, I, I guess I'm just going to kind of have a symbolic no vote on this. I, I think, you know, it was no secret that I would have preferred to, uh, either stay on energy or upgrade it to, uh, Planning Commission, upgrade in the amount of work perhaps. Uh, and, uh, you know, that wasn't allowed or it wasn't offered. And so, you know, I'm disappointed by that because I think I do a good job serving. I've lived here 35 some years. I, I know the city like the back of my hand. I have a big interest in planning. And I spent the last 20 years, uh, in the trades. And so I have even bigger interest in planning, you might say, and, and, and building in the, the built environment. So, um, that's all. I'm just, I'm not going to support this because I, I'm not satisfied with my appointments. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant.
Thanks. Um, I guess, um, I, I'll want to respond to Councilmember Hayner, but, but first just talk a little bit about the process, um, that I followed that was, um, you know, in, in, you know, knowing that I would be nominated for this position and being asked by the mayor to help with the process, which is traditionally, um, what one of the roles and responsibilities of the mayor pro tem. Um, I've had three mayor pro tems that have come before me since I've been on council. So I've been able to watch their processes. Um, one was Saber Brier, the next one was Chuck Warpe Hasky, and then the other one was Jane Mom. Um, and, um, you know, they all followed a fairly similar process to, I think, what I did, um, this time around with, with a few tweaks and, um, and none of them ever had five new council members come on at once. So there was inevitably, um, a lot more movement than I think we've, you know, at least since I've been on council in the last six years that, that we've had in the past. So there were a lot of, um, preferences and experiences that needed to be balanced and a lot of, um, movement off. Um, every, I can say that everyone who, um, responded to my emails and where we had a back and forth, um, that I really did try to honor those preferences. Um, Councilmember Hayner, for example, asked to be off energy. And when I asked him, um, when he sent me just a list of only six committees and I asked for alternatives, they weren't provided to me. Um, so when another council member expressed an interest in serving on energy, um, that's the decision why I, um, made that movement with respect to rules. Um, rules has sometimes been part of the Administration Committee. Um, it was at one point. It was a combined committee. Um, then it was split. And I know that, um, with the rise of other new boards and commissions, that staff has felt quite stretched. So part of it, um, although this ultimately comes from the mayor and, and he was certainly supportive of that, um, decision to merge those. Um, that's where that's coming from. Although I'm certainly happy, um, to add that to the agenda of the first admin committee and see if we think it, um, makes sense to, to split that off. And I think it was, it wasn't in, it was certainly a discussion that I, that I knew would come up at council and then I hoped would come up at council. And, you know, I'm happy to hear pros and cons, but I think for this first go-round, um, makes sense to have them merged. And having sat on admin for some time now, we, there's just so much crossover between admin and rules that it made sense to do that so we could create some capacity for other committees, um, in the future. But I really, um, do want to thank all of my colleagues who, who were responsive and, and worked with me and were flexible. Um, but these appointments really, I did my best to try to reflect the interests of, um, 11 people and their backgrounds and their preferences. Um, and in my, um, and I didn't take anyone off anything that they were already on, um, unless they explicitly asked to be taken off of it. So, um, that is a rule that, that all three mayor pro tems before me followed. And that's one that I tried to do, um, with these groups. So happy to answer any other questions if anyone has them about the process. Thanks.
Councilmember Umlawi.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, uh, Councilmember Grand for putting in the time to, to put this together. I know it, it, it's not easy. Um, I, I, uh, was going to bring up the same question on the Rules Committee, if we can have a, a better understanding of, of where that's going. Uh, it just, uh, automatically disappeared. And, and I know there's been some telegraphing with, with collapsing that committee in with the admin, but I, I, I believe, you know, um, a bit of further explanation on that could, could be very helpful. Um, I also believe that hopefully the, the five new members of council will get a, uh, slightly better onboarding experience than I received when I was joint council. It was a, a pretty much a crash course lesson, uh, with all the 10 to 11 different boards and committee assignments that I was on. Not a whole lot of information was given to us prior to our first meeting. And you walk in and you're like, okay, um, you know, because there's, there's work that, that's going to be, um, in the mid, in the process when you join. Uh, there's going to be things that if this, these boards and commissions have been working on for six months or a year or more, uh, and you're just walking into the room for the first time. And, and hopefully, um, you know, you, you get a, a little bit more guidance and help with, with your first couple of meetings than, than what I experienced, uh, to be honest with you. Uh, some you'll be voting, others you won't be voting. And so frankly, I was on one. I didn't realize until the third meeting whether I was a voting member or not. And I don't think that's right. Uh, so, um, hopefully you, you all get some advice from, from legal staff and city administrator on, on your roles and responsibilities. Um, but there, there is one here that, um, has caught some members of the community off guard, and that's the, the community, uh, Council of the Commons, um, that was formed in the last couple of months. And, uh, I was named, uh, one of the first two council members to that. Um, I expressed, uh, interest in serving on that until, uh, a different council member could come and assume that role because there are, uh, a few things going on here. First of all, there's been concerns that I have a conflict of interest because I have interests on the block that this, um, uh, Commons, uh, abuts to. So, um, furthermore, I have, uh, a pretty busy situation going on. Uh, and, uh, I felt that it'd be best for, uh, me to assume that position short-term and then, um, give it to my counterpart in the fifth ward, uh, Ms. Briggs, uh, Councilmember Briggs to, to assume. Uh, so, uh, I apologize. I didn't communicate that very well. I didn't realize that I would, this change would happen as quickly as it did, but, uh, I, it's something that I, that I asked for. So it's, it's here now and, uh, and, and, and I, and I accept it. And I just hope that, um, Councilmember Briggs will, will show the, the qualities that we need right now, um, in uni, in, in unifying our community. Uh, this is a very factional, very polarizing issue, um, continues to be polarizing. And hopefully, uh, that's not the role that council members take when they, uh, assume this responsibility, that they are, are there to, uh, do what they just were sworn in to do. And that's to uphold the city's charter, the constitution, the state constitution as well. So this is a part of that. And, um, and I hope to see that done, uh, with, with that assignment. Thank you.
I'd step in briefly on this to the, uh, as the rules and admin. Um, you know, I've, uh, served on both, uh, rules and admin for some time. And, um, we very rarely bring rules changes to the council. And it's been, you know, at least in my experience, that the times, the, the aggregate time spent by everybody, uh, at the, at the Rules Committee has not resulted in, uh, material council rule improvement. Um, it strikes me that that's a useful, uh, function for the admin committees since they do overlap. Um, I think in terms of function, uh, with, yeah, I think they overlap many. But, uh, in any event, um, I'll also, you know, of course, you know, uh, listen to what, uh, colleagues have to say on this and, uh, and, and take that into full consideration. So it's a, I wouldn't characterize it as a done deal. Um, it is an ongoing discussion, but, um, in my experience, which I think is fairly, uh, well, in, in my experience on this, rules has not been, uh, worth the time spent, has not had resulted in, in positive movement. Councilmember Griswold.
Um, I want to thank Councilmember Grand. I am very pleased with my assignment, um, and the process went very well. Um, a couple of things. One is the Mobility Committee has gone away. And I assume that since we are not acknowledging it, no further action needs to be taken. And the work, um, that I was involved in has been, uh, transferred to the Policy Agenda Committee, and I am a member of that. So I just wanted to, um, assure the, the public that that work is continuing. And the, the primary project is the upgrades to the And the, the primary project is the upgrades to the Huron Crosswalk near Thayer that is under MDOT's jurisdiction. Um, and then regarding the rules committee, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. But if we're going to discuss it in the admin committee, uh, I would recommend that we have our December admin committee meeting before the next council meeting. Right now I believe it's scheduled for December 8th, which is the following day. So if, if possible, if we could move it up a week, that would, uh, that would get this business taken care of before we meet again. Thanks.
Councilmember Hainer.
Thanks. I just want to make it clear that, um, if I understand this correctly, that a, a vote in favor of, you know, kind of accepting this notion of how these came about is really a vote to throw any idea of that seniority carries any weight on this body out the window. Um, and we've applied it in some places where we, uh, it has been assumed and then applied. Um, like, for instance, for mayor pro tem where the, 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 I assume it stepped down based on seniority because it's the mayor. And then Ms. Grant, who does have seniority to be pro tem. And then all of the senior folks by ward, I assume is how I came out to be third and then, and so on. And so we're throwing that out the window. Uh, that, that's okay for that, but for council appointments at the, uh, that are kind of at the will of the mayor and the council both, um, seniority has no say is what I understand. Otherwise I would have had exactly what I asked for. And, you know, that's fine if that's how it's going down. I just wanted to make it clear that I, I'm not going to support that because I really felt that, uh, and I was informed by previous council bodies that that's how it happened. And I know we threw out the pro tem thing even, uh, when I think, uh, Mr. Warpeowski started that, former council member Warpeowski, uh, where he was not the, the most senior person and yet he was nominated pro tem. So just to be clear, for this body, the next two years, we're throwing out the notion that seniority came to play whatsoever in council assignments. And that, that's what a yes means.
Councilmember Redina.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. And I just wanted to really briefly thank my ward colleague, uh, Councilmember Grant for her work on this. Um, I, I know that, uh, it's not easy to kind of wrangle the, um, preferences and opinions of such a, a big group of people. And, um, and I, I was just really grateful for the way that you worked with all of us to, to try to make those preferences, um, uh, play out in, in these appointments. Um, and I, I also wanted to just personally thank you for your willingness to give up your seat on the Human Rights Commission so that I could serve in the capacity where, um, I have, uh, obviously some interest near and dear to my heart and a commission that I have worked with in my previous role as LGBTQ liaison. So thank you.
Councilmember Romlovi.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can ask, uh, our, our city attorney a question here with, with this process and the responsibility of naming these, uh, positions of council members. This, this power lies with the mayor or the mayor pro tem? I, I think we have some confusion perhaps where this power truly lies, uh, whether it's the mayor's power or, or is it the mayor pro tem? Cause when I read the city charter, it was not the power of the mayor pro tem.
It, it is the power of the mayor, but there's nothing that prevents the mayor from, from having the, um, the, um, collection or the, uh, uh, proposal and doing the, the legwork, which is really the, the, uh, uh, what you get when you're mayor pro tem, the legwork to put this together. Uh, and obviously, uh, in the end it, it, uh, it, it, it comes from the mayor. And so, um, but the power, uh, on council committees, and we need to be clear about the different types of, uh, uh, committees. There's committees, there's commissions, there's statutory things, the, 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 uh, council committees. Uh, that, that's, that's under the, that is under the mayor. And, uh, uh, coming back to the, uh, council administration committee, um, and it's, it's related to this and, and that, um, rules always came from the council administration committee prior to, you know, I think about 2014. Um, but, but at that time, and I, I appreciated hearing from Councilmember Grant and, uh, uh, on that point, that the new council administration committee, when they meet, you know, that's a topic that I think that they'll, uh, be able to discuss right off the bat. And so I, I do think that, uh, you can provide advice to the mayor and, and, uh, another council committee. Uh, again, that power is, uh, is in that provision, uh, for him to name those. And, and actually approving, uh, there's some question about whether the council even needs to approve. Uh, uh, but that is, uh, you know, that is how it has gone. And, and, uh, certainly, uh, uh, we can look at that more. Uh, there've been, been inconsistencies, but the one consistency, consistency has been the mayor's, uh, power under the charter. Yes.
Uh, thanks. Thanks for being, I just, just want to make that clear for everybody that's listening and, and perhaps for men, for members of this body to know that. That's, that's where the power lies and it's obvious. And, and that's, that's where any criticism or, or any, any thought needs to, to really be channeled. So thank you.
For the discussion. I guess I'd like to have a little bit of clarification on that, Mr. Post. And I think there's a distinction to be made, if I'm not mistaken, between council committees.
Yes.
And appointments to commissions. Council committees are within the mayor's per, uh, exclusive prerogatives.
Yeah, that's correct.
The council commissions, uh, seats on commissions are not within the mayor's prerogatives and are subject to, and are, uh, in, uh, yeah, the, some of them are by mayor on nomination, by way of example. The planning commission, uh, others are, I suppose nominated by mayor's initiative in this context, but are not the mayor's control or not mayor, not mayoral nominations, uh, but rather are subject to the vote of the whole council, uh, really from the jump. So I'll take Parks Commission by way of example. The Parks Commission, uh, if people wanted to alter the Parks Commission appointment, this would be, they would have the opportunity to do so, uh, by amendment. But to do that with respect to, say, the audit committee would be off key. Am I correct?
That is correct. And my, my only, uh, uh, clarification on the voting was, had to do directly with the council committees only.
Correct. The voting on the council committee is perhaps unnecessary per the charter, but we do it anyway.
That's right.
Thank you. Further discussion? On favor? I'm sorry. My apologies. Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Romlovi.
Councilmember Romlovi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hainer.
No.
Councilmember Dish.
Yes.
Councilmember Griswold.
Yes.
Councilmember Song.
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Councilmember Redina.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, before taking a short break, I realized that I was, uh, amiss in myself not thanking Councilmember Grant, uh, for, uh, for doing, you know, the vast bulk of the legwork on this. It is, um, um, it's not easy work and, uh, but it's necessary. So thank you. Let's take a short break. Uh, let us reconvene at 9:05. Thank you. We are back after a short break. DC 2 Resolution directing the Planning Commission to create a transit-supported development district. Moved by Councilmember Grant, seconded by Councilmember Iyer. Discussion, please, of DC 2. Uh, so I guess I'll, uh, take a little bit of a, a, a jump on this. Um, this was, uh, originally, uh, brought forward a couple of months ago, but was put on the table in part, uh, or at least at the time it was described as being put on the table because of the, uh, you know, the, uh, because of COVID and, uh, and then, uh, an uncertainty as to whether or not planning commission and our staff would be able to get this off the ground. Um, and that, um, has, uh, I think, uh, been resolved. That is to say COVID certainly not, but the ability of planning commission and staff to get it off the ground, um, has. And that is to say they are, uh, able to do it and, uh, and eager to do it. And for my part, I'm eager to have them do it. Um, we all know that we are looking for a wide variety of solutions to improve, uh, housing in Ann Arbor. Some of that includes just regular old market housing as it is. Uh, some of it, uh, is through, uh, Proposal C and, uh, us as a municipal organization being able to build affordable housing. And some of it is by, you know, altering, uh, market, altering, uh, conditions so as to encourage the market to build, uh, some of the housing that we want. Uh, and additional housing on, on transit corridors is exactly the kind of housing that we want. It will of its nature, uh, be, um, you know, it won't be affordable, affordable, but it will be, uh, less expensive, I believe, than other market, than other, uh, market level housing throughout the community. And it will help us meet our, um, our housing goals, um, our economic desegregation goals and our climate action goals because people who live on transit corridors will be able to come in and out of, uh, in and out of the community, in and out of downtown and hopefully to workplaces, uh, without a car because of the easy availability for transit. Um, transit oriented development is exactly, I think, what we needed. I'm, uh, excited to ask Planning Commission to, uh, to move it forward. Councilmember Briggs.
Yeah. Um, so I too am excited to see this, uh, resolution coming forward. It's something that coming, just coming off of Planning Commission. Um, we've certainly had conversations around, um, for a few years now. And, um, there's a fair amount of, um, supporting, uh, evidence in our master plan documents, um, compilation that, that, that leads us in this direction, um, starting, you know, back in, over a decade ago in the master, um, in land use element. Um, and then in more recent documents as well. Um, and it's something that I think many of us heard when we were campaigning, uh, this summer. I know I did, that, um, if there's an agreement about maybe where growth is appropriate in our community, it is that, um, along major transit corridors is a, is an area that, that folks seem to be, um, continue to be supportive of, of, of more mixed use, um, development. Um, but I think that because some of this conversation, even though we've been having this conversation for a long time and it's part of our master plan, I think it's maybe a good time to reengage our community in the discussion, um, for those who haven't been focused, um, on it quite as much, um, recently. Um, so that we're, make sure we're starting this conversation from the same place, answering questions, listening to feedback from as many residents as we can. Um, and so. And so I just have one amendment to make tonight based on some of the concerns I think that we have heard, which I think are generally around concerns and worries about process, which coming off of Planning Commission, I know the planning staff is exceptional and really believes in community engagement. And I actually don't think we need this resolution or this, my amendment at all, but I think it might provide some of the community a little bit more comfort if it was there. Because people are, want to make sure that there's a robust community engagement process. So I think Ms. Boydery just forwarded around a, another resolved clause, which I would like to propose an amendment to add that as a second resolved clause in between the first and the third. For those at home who cannot see that, I'll just read it. It says, "Resolved that the Ann Arbor City Council requests that the city planning commission develop additional public engagement opportunities that are both educational in nature and solicit feedback from residents, particularly those often underrepresented in the planning process about the proposed transit-supported district." And that would just happen before Planning Commission forwards us anything. So I did chat with-
Is there a second?
That's friendly. Yeah, that's okay with you, Mayor.
Second by Councilmember Regina. I'm sorry, Councilmember Briggs, you have the floor. My apologies.
That's all.
Is that friendly to the body? Is it not, is, it is not friendly? Am I getting headshaked, Councilmember Hanner?
I mean, it's not unfriendly, but I do have some, a comment about it.
Well, yes, let's put it on, let's have it. May I ask you to, well, I would propose that it be friendly and that you then include your comment on that amendment and your comments on the main motion. Is that all right?
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Briggs, I think you still have the floor, or is that it?
That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
That's really terrific that Councilmember Briggs brought this forward, because I was just about to speak to the fact that I think there is some misinformation about what this is and what it's not. And what it's not is a done deal. And what it is, is an opportunity for a great deal of public engagement. So I really appreciate the clarification that Councilmember Briggs brought forward. I am incredibly excited to be bringing this forward. I think there's a lot of community support behind this idea. The mayor spoke already about the number of goals that it meets for us. This, to me, in terms of housing policy in the city, is, is about the lowest hanging fruit that we can grasp right now. It, it really is something that we need to dedicate some time and move forward in a way that's, that's really comprehensive and not limited, I believe, to one part of the city. But, but really something that we should be looking more broadly and engaging the community about where we think it belongs and how it should be implemented. So I don't want to take a lot of time, but I do want to recognize my former third ward colleague, Zach Ackerman, who was the one who brought this forward in the first place. So it, it feels really terrific in short order of him leaving council while he's still around town to be able to bring this forward tonight. Thanks so much.
Councilwoman O'Malley.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Taylor, and, and Councilmember Briggs for enhancing this main motion. You know, this is a, a pretty non-threatening resolution when it comes to some of the, the fears that some have in the community about what this means. There, there are fears because of failed promises that the city of Ann Arbor has made in the past. We make lots of promises and we fail to deliver many of the times. And one of the biggest examples of that, frankly, is D1, D2, when, when, when Ann Arbor changed its zoning ordinances for the downtown area. And this change was supposed to usher in affordable housing and diversity and more opportunity and a stronger community ultimately. But what we saw was that not play out exactly that way. What we saw was increased gentrification, speculation, less diversity, only high-end residential units built. So there, there is a fear in the community about what are our intentions here? Is this a Trojan horse? Are we packing this thing with all sorts of surprises that will come out later? So that is my only trepidation right now. Are those fears that hopefully will be dispelled? But there's real reason, unfortunately, to have those fears for many in our community. They just, things are sold and not delivered. So we already heard from, from a couple constituents earlier this evening during commentary about the concerns, about what will be built first? What are the geographical boundaries of such a, a district or ordinance change? And the lack of this being part of a more comprehensive approach to our land use issues here in Ann Arbor, as we are faced with many ambitious goals. So I will throw caution into the wind. And I will say that we don't have a very robust mass transit system in Ann Arbor. Frankly, it's, it's not, it's not very good at all, unfortunately. And with all due respect to everybody that's involved in it, they're, they're all trying to do their best. But this is America and what we have to deal with is, is, it's a lot of things that, that make it very challenging. So, you know, even during the pandemic, we saw services for AAAA get slashed to 20%. Routes unserviced. So again, it falls on the most marginalized and the lowest, lowest people on socioeconomic income who got, who get affected first. So again, I just want to throw these things out there. I ultimately will support this, but there are real concerns that I have going forward.
Councilmember Hanner.
Oh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I, I appreciate the amendment, and I know we're speaking to the whole. So my concern about the amendment was the last word was his district instead of districts. And I think we understand that not all transit is the same. In fact, in our, you know, in the various referring documents that were accompanied our Q and A, I think that was the T1 slideshow that was put back in there. We speak variously to high-capacity transit corridor, signature transit corridors, premier transit service and so on. There's all these definitions of transit, but they're really not definitions. They're, they're not defined anywhere. And so, you know, the first question we have to ask ourselves is, is this a district or many districts? Is this a one size fits all or many sizes fit all? And if indeed we're speaking to all, like this is, and like many have said, then that really rises to the level of a master planning conversation. And, you know, recommendations for land use, the very first bullet point on recommendations for land use is to update the land use recommendations of the master plan to support increased density and mixed use in these so-called signature transit corridors. And so let's update the land use recommendations of the master plan. Or let's look at DC 4 and, and have this, have this experiment of one small use of the master plan that the community has already agreed to, and one area that the community has already agreed to. And frankly, in the State Street area, which we will speak to in a few, I suppose, even though I asked to talk to them together. You know, that is the very definition, I would assume, of a high-capacity transit corridor with the freeways. And when you look at actual capacity, actual cars on and off, or actual people on, in or out of the city, I think that that area best fits that. So when we speak of, is it, is it a district or districts? And maybe that's a question for Mr. Leonard. It's a small thing, but it, you know, it makes a difference to me because the potential for the, the changes that could come from this, the ordinances that would be created, you know, with whatever little community conversation that resolution put in, you know, it has the potential to affect, you know, many thousands of parcels, as an example. And, you know, that's, that's a big picture topic. And not that the suggestions that are in our land use element are transportation update, or even in the South State Street corridor, which hasn't been acted upon since 2013, you know, really are well-defined and really support the notion that we can move ahead and affect thousands of parcels in the city without a broader community conversation inside of the master plan. So I don't support this, which is why I brought an alternative resolution. And, you know, you can see where these things are going. I think anybody with, with, you know, open, open eyes sees how this is, you know, going to go down now and in the future. And that's disappointing, I think. If you really look through the Qs and A, Q and As, you'll see that, you know, this DC 2 is just a little too much. I don't expect Planning Commission to have a conversation in a vacuum if we did DC 4 instead of DC 2. I understand that transit has a beginning and an end. But all of the whereas clauses that speak so highly to the benefits of this really speak to areas of the-
Councilmember, you're at 3:15.
Country, yeah, I'm timing myself also. That, that, okay, fine. They, they do not speak to Ann Arbor's signature transit. Let me just say that. I think this is, I have concerns about the broadness of this and I will not support it.
Councilmember Song.
I just want to, I thank Councilmember Briggs for this amendment. Community engagement is important. You know, one of the things that I really highlighted when I campaigned was the, the fact that I got from County Commissioner Katie Scott when I asked how many of the nurses at U of M actually live in Ann Arbor. And she, she told me that of the 6,300 union-paying nurses at U of M, only 842 live in the city. Um, you know, and the same, same challenges were repeated by teachers. You know, how many teachers can actually afford to live in Ann Arbor? But we're already here, part of our community, traveling, commuting in. Same with the library. You know, the library has its challenges. How many of the librarians can afford to live in town? So these are, when we, when I think about TOD and I've looked at things like, you know, we know that our senior population is going to double by 2040. You know, taking a look at the AARP's policy work and livable communities supporting TOD. These are conversations I hope that Council, Councilmember Briggs amendment can really speak to. You know, hopefully we can get these folks to the table. The nurses, the teachers, the librarians, seniors who are hoping that we can age in place here in the city. The AARP's work is amazing. It talks about how, you know, seniors actually increased, they were, they had a more active lifestyle and used public transportation more actively once TOD was implemented in their cities. This is fact-based work. It's, it's, it's how to sustain our community and look ahead and care for each other. So I'm excited about these conversations. So thank you, Councilwoman Briggs, for putting forth this amendment.
Councilmember Dish.
I would like to put a question to staff, and I may be misremembering, but my understanding was that this, this isn't going to be a district in the conventional sense that we think of a district. It's going to be a designation that a developer can request if they want to develop on one of these corridors that's well-served by bus routes and they want to do a multi-use and a higher, higher building than would normally be possible. And I may be misremembering this, but I wanted to put the question if staff would be able to clarify how this will work.
That, that is accurate to how it's been envisioned to date. Ultimately, how it, any ordinance is considered and applied is ultimately going to be up to this body. But that was the intention, was to start with the development of a district that would be an available tool. I believe that this original resolution asks for that district to be delivered with some preliminary ideas about where that district might be first considered. So that is the intention, is to start with creating a district that might be available to achieve these goals. I want to be clear, I think down the road, there will, it would logically, the next steps of that would be to start thinking about the geographies that it might be appropriate and how the city wants to consider the application of that district to those geographies. But that's how, how you've described it, is how the conversation from the staff and planning commission to date had been heading prior to it sort of being shelved for the time being.
Councilmember Dish, oh, Councilmember Dish, Mr. Delacorte. Mr. Delacorte.
Oh, yeah. I didn't know if you want a Councilmember Dish to go first or not.
I, my inference was that she was, I was confirming that she was done and I infer that she is.
Yeah, I should be careful. I'm going to switch subject. I just, I just want to caution on the amendment proposed. The Planning Commission certainly seeks to reach out to as broader group as possible and staff is encouraging and supportive of that at all occasions. If it's council's intent, as with previous projects, that separate public engagement be done outside of what is normally dictated or required by process, you know, what is normally associated with an ordinance adoption. Common practice has been we've, we've brought a budget for what that additional cost would be and its capacity, its staff's capacity to do that. I would assume because of where this is with the Planning Commission and, and the need for this to be a community conversation, that the Planning Commission themselves envisions hearing from as broad a, a segment of the population as possible. And that's not necessary here. But before we go any farther, I want to confirm that that's what I'm hearing is that the public engagement staff in the Planning Commission should strive to reach as broad an audience as possible through the normal process, but that nothing outside of that process is being requested here. Similarly to like we've done with short-term rental and other things, where we've set aside a specific budget to do those additional public engagement sessions outside of the process. So I just want to make sure I'm hearing that correct from a staff standpoint so that there's not a misunderstanding from us as we go forward.
Yes, Councilmember Briggs, if you can just touch upon that briefly and then-
I get, I guess from my intent to- what I'm hoping is that there is something beyond the typical working session, sort of, you know, RSC, working session, Planning Commission review, that I think that it would be appropriate to have potentially a couple of webinars on the subject. Talked to Mr. Leonard about this previously around, you know, something like, you know, maybe not that different from the floodplain ordinance in some ways that, but, but a little bit different in the sense that I think that there's a little bit of a starting conversation that needs to be had to get, where is this coming from? What is a transit-supported district allowing us to have? What that, what that conversation looks like in our community? That this is coming from recommendations within our land use element? Kind of a little bit of getting our, our community on the same page, because we all were on the same page maybe 10 years ago when some of these recommendations came forward and at different points. So there's a little bit of a, an informational piece that I think is important and that might be able to be wrapped up in the same public engagement where people are being given opportunity to do a little bit more back and forth than sometimes they get to do with their three-minute time at a, at a working session or a regular planning commission. So, and then with an attempt to, to focus a little bit on those who, who don't necessarily come to the planning table. Just a little bit of, we know that there's, there are folks that have their, have relatively strong opinions on this in the community already, but trying to think creatively about, I think some of our public engagement opportunities have been really successful at getting groups of folks out recently. So I don't know if it, if it needs new tools or not, but just being sort of a little, a little more deliberate in this so that we're, we're having a community conversation around it. It was my intent, but I don't know about that.
Councilmember Griswold.
Thank you. I'm going to be supporting this and these are all worthy goals that we're discussing. But I think there's another component to this and we need to be discussing the wealth that's going to be created from this and the wealth transfer. And that either needs to be recorded and tracked by staff or by a private citizens group. There's going to be winners and there's going to be losers. And we, we would be naive not to think that there are many developers already that have designed buildings based on these transit corridors. And I was invited to a couple of these- And I was invited to a couple of these meetings, uh, less than two years ago. There is a detailed plan for the arbor land area that includes a hotel and mixed use behind what is now arbor land. And part of that would back up to the residential area that's there. Again, I'm not judging whether that's good or bad. But while we're talking about how it's going to help the underserved, we have to realize that there is going to be tremendous, I'll say it again, tremendous wealth created from this upzoning. And that needs to be considered because not everyone is going to be a winner in this. And we've got to carefully track that, keep a focus on it and make sure it's being done in a very transparent manner where all of our community members are treated fairly.
Twenty five to fifty based on what they're talking about. And that way, and my,
Mr. Delacorte's. Mr. Delacorte, you're,
Leading through.
You're coming through. Councilmember Nelson.
I'm muted. Thank you. Um, I, I just, I, I just want to repeat something that's been stated earlier. So we're very, very clear about what we're talking about. Um, there's no expectation that the housing created on these transit corridors will be affordable. I think that, that needs to be stated more explicitly. And I, I guess I have a procedural question because I know that Councilmember Hayner asked at the beginning of this meeting about the consideration of DC two and DC four together, or perhaps, um, talk about them as two different options, because I know that when we talk about transit corridors, I, context is everything. And, um, you know, one of the things about DC four, and I, I know we're not technically talking about that at this point. It's in Ward four and this is a transit corridor that is not, um, so very much abutted up against residential areas. And it strikes me that the South State Street corridor is, is an interesting place to start in terms of experimentation with this zoning. And I, we talked a little bit of caucus about this last night and I appreciated Councilmember Briggs' participation last night. Because my curiosity is that if, if we believe in this and we believe that it will be successful, it, it strikes me that we, we would logically roll it out, not everywhere, but starting in a small way or starting in one place. And so, um, I guess my question is based on what Councilmember Hayner mentioned at the beginning of this meeting. Is there a way for us to discuss DC two and DC four in conjunction or together? Thank you.
I guess procedurally, I'm unaware of that. I mean, you can certainly, I would say you can discuss the resolution with DC, you can discuss the, one can discuss DC two and with DC four in mind, one can cross reference it. But I think we have one motion on that, one resolution on the table. On the floor rather, uh, and you know, that's, that is what is subject to the vote. Councilmember Hayner.
Thanks. These are questions. I have a question for Mr. Leonard. So we've talked about how this is all, this DC two is so driven by these land use settlements. Do you anticipate that the ordinance revisions that will come back will speak to the land use settlements that are in the T one slideshow? Will these transit corridors act as receiving zones for transfer and development rights programs? Will that be coordinated with, coordinated with, you know, where will the money for that program come from? You know, anything like that? I mean, these land use, these land use, um, recommendations are pretty specific, much more specific than DC two allows. You know, or, or, or should, I should rather say, um, acknowledges. And so I just wondered, is that something that you're really thinking about? Are we going to really shit transfer development rights into these zones with this potential, um, ordinance revision?
It's not part of the initial analysis. Transfer of development rights has some legal hurdles in the state of Michigan to be able to, to utilize that. Um, so, um, it's not something that we've spent a lot of time for that reason, because it's, um, probably has some barriers to being legal. But, um, that'd be, um, for somebody else to conclude ultimately, but, um, no, that the sort of it is transfer of development rights is not being considered as part of the, of part of this. We are looking at, um, the typology of building that, um, we are getting now and might desire to get in the future based on a series of, uh, past community master plan conversations, both in the land use plan, which applies broadly and South State Corridor, which, um, obviously applies more locally to a region of the city with, with the same recommendations. So, um, I, as, um, as referenced previously, I would envision that, uh, the most responsive to this resolution as drafted would be not only what that district, how that district reads, but yes, these are some of the first areas that we think that it could apply. And I'll, I'll just share that some of our first analysis has been focused on the South State Corridor and Washtenaw Avenue. Those come from, those initial discussions come from a couple lens. South State is an incredible job center. There's a ton of office space there, but it's lacking some of the other aspects of land use that sort of function in the way that our master plan speaks to. So what's our opportunity to improve that? And then Washtenaw has had a lot of community conversation via the reimagined Washtenaw effort, the multi jurisdiction collaboration. So, um, we spent a fair amount of time thinking about those two districts or those two corridors specifically. The question also came up previously, those give about, is this one district, is it several district? Those, um, we also thought gave us, um, some pretty distinct typologies to think about how this district or districts might manifest depending on the community context. Again, I, I, I don't know at this point how that will ultimately land, but it could uh, be realized in multiple districts, or it could be in a single district that successfully responds to its context with setbacks and development standards in such a way that the same district would be just as appropriate along both of those corridors or even other.
All right. Thanks for answering that. I mean, I would, I would have been shocked to see that be part of this. And, you know, I just, I would, I guess we'll just point out, because it, it's clear that something like this is going to pass, you know, it's going to pass. And so, um, that some of our, you know, some of our work programs, some of our land use goals, objectives and so on, that they kind of work against each other. And so I, I caution our, our colleagues on planning commission and the residents on planning commission that to, uh, take a real good look at what is being asked and what has been already asked and agreed upon by the city. And, and, and the decisions are going to have to be made between these various philosophies and bullet points that are in these land use elements, master plan goals and so on. That some things don't, just don't jibe with each other. And so another reason that why I prefer a more focused approach to this. Not only the, not only the, the idea that all these whereas clauses are really kind of, you know, they, they don't really speak to Ann Arbor specifically, of course, how could they? Uh, only a few studies, unlike our own studies that I recommended in DC, in DC four. But just the fact that, um, it's just, you know, it's just doesn't seem, it's just too broad for me. It seems like it's, it, I can't shake the notion that uh, we are reaching what should be master plan revisions and conversations and not just ordinance revisions and conversations. And I, I, I will dare to speculate that Mr. Delacorte was speaking to twenty five to fifty thousand dollars worth of public outreach. And the notion is that that was only a nice sentiment that Councilwoman Briggs sent for it. It doesn't really mean anything to the conversation. I'm, I'm concerned about that also. Thank you.
Councilmember Allo.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I, I share the concerns of my colleagues on this, uh, and, and hopefully we can work through those, but you know, this, this does seem as, as some would, would, would think that this is a, this is a, a way to untap the locked wealth that's in that real estate. And now who's going to benefit from that? That, 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 that is the question. And this, this will be, if it goes through and everything works out as some would hope. This would create tremendous opportunities for folks to, um, to, to, to profiteer from, from this at the expense of many, under the guise of, of many different policies that probably won't be benefited from this. So, uh, I, I will say that, um, that there are a lot of people coming into Ann Arbor. But we have to, we, we have to, we have to consider that many people would not choose to live in Ann Arbor, even though they come and work here. People, uh, our taxes are extremely high. This price per square foot is extremely high. We are in dense quarters. We are politically liberal. There are many reasons why people would choose not to live in Ann Arbor. I love this city. I've been here much of my life. But I'm just saying, we are not going to simply put all those people who are coming in on cars and, 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 and put them in houses, uh, and, and become full time residents of Ann Arbor. A lot of people will choose not to do that. So, uh, again, there, there are many reasons why I, I, uh, have concerns of this. Ultimately, again, I will support it. I will just have a last question here for the city administrator and perhaps Brett and Derek, when we talk about our master plan. We put that on hold because of budget concerns this year. When is that coming back? And how much of what comes out of this is going to be baked in to the revision of the master plan?
As far as it coming back, I can say, you know, that was such a significant item. I, I don't see that in the next year, to be honest, uh, unless things really start, uh, looking up. But I think it's possible the year after that. I think we're getting close. I think you've got time to working on something like, uh, a transit order development and then, and then consider incorporation into the, the master plan. But Mr. Delacorte may have some additional thoughts on that.
Don't, I, I had a comment on something else, but I, I want to make sure that answers the Councilmember's question first. Well, I guess since you, you hear, well, what's the cost going to be on this amendment for this outreach? And who are the underrepresented, underrepresented folks that we're going to be targeting? Do we know who that segment of the population is? Um, well, I think anytime we, we do outreach and I'll let Brett kick me if I'm wrong. I mean, we, we try to get a, a broad based, uh, a group that's representative of the community. Uh, and the people who may be, uh, either using these facilities or coming in and out of the community. So, um, we, we constantly strive to, to get as broad a, a communication as possible. It's not easy. In some ways, uh, moving to electronic communications and meetings and outreach, we've had some excess, success recently. With reaching out to, to a broader group. Some of the, the affordable housing conversations we've had, uh, with the Ann Arbor Housing Commission and some of the outreach we've done with Smith Group on those, on those projects. I've been encouraged, um, by the amount of folks that have been able to participate. Even some of our public engagement or public meetings, planning commission in here, we've seen a, a, a broader outreach or more people being able to communicate just by phone during public engagement or, or, or public hearing session. So there's been some improvement. We don't have, I don't have target numbers in front of me to share with you on what that was. We had, we didn't have a chance to, to really discuss the amendment before we got here. As far as costs, um, similar projects, and I think, uh, I wasn't muted. I think you guys heard me talking about similar projects we've done in the past, depending on the number of meetings. Mr. Leonard and I haven't had the conversation yet or not, if we can do this one internally, if there's going to be meetings in addition to what we would normally do. I think the directive was to, to work with the planning commission. So I think we want to have a discussion with them before we, we determine what that plan looks like. Similar full, I mean, full blown outreach, uh, sessions, you know, three to 10 meetings on projects have in the past, taken anywhere from twenty five to fifty thousand dollars, depending on the amount of outside consultant work we use and the amount of, uh, reporting that's necessary. I don't think that's what I'm hearing here. But I, I think we want to have that conversation with the planning commission. If we feel to meet that amendment's goals, that more money is necessary, that we don't have budgeted right now, we would come back to you and explain, um, why that is and what we need and ask council to consider it. Right now, I don't think that's necessary.
Councilmember Song.
Just to clarify, we're speaking on, uh, Councilmember Briggs amendment, not the resolution entirety, right?
We are not. The, the amendment was included and was deemed to be friendly. It doesn't require, my apologies for that.
Okay. So comments now are on the resolution in it, in its entirety.
Uh, you, you, there's the, the, uh, the amendment is now part of the resolution. And so speak on what you will.
All right. Thank you. So, um, I brought up a, a couple of examples for community engagement. I would always like to save the city money and I, I, I interpreted Councilmember Briggs' resolution as a, a challenge to fellow, fellow council members to reach out to residents in our ward and have these conversations if you already haven't had them. You know, and ask people to participate. I, hopefully that's, that's, uh, a way of helping and supporting city staff efforts in that, in, in that endeavor versus, um, you know, adding additional costs. As for the amendment in itself, we're not the first city to consider TOD. And yes, it is, it is a challenge to meet affordability while, you know, bringing this development forward. But I'll, I'll keep putting to the AARP. I feel like there, it's, 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 it's solid work. They give Arlington as an example of how, you know, ironically, the popularity of quarter development makes preserving affordable housing a challenge. But to kind of rack those housing prices, they adopted, uh, and expanded density bonus provisions for development and affordable housing. And they, there's also research that points out to how if it wasn't for encouraging that kind of density along, um, corridors, they, it would have taken fourteen square miles versus a couple, versus two square miles. So there's inefficiency. Besides talking about demand, um, this, there, there's an efficiency to this, uh, that would support, um, our density concerns, our, our, our environmental concerns. I hope that's helpful.
Councilmember Griswold.
Thank you. Uh, this is a very benevolent plan. As I said, I'm going to support it. And in terms of the wealth that's being created by this, we can, uh, track the records in the assessor's office to look at land values. But I have a very naive question, and that is how do we measure the lost opportunity by not using PUDs, which would require affordable housing and instead using this transit corridor? Is there any estimate of that? Does that make sense, that question?
Yeah, it's, it's a difficult question. Um, frankly, we hear some, um, we hear hesitation at times from petitioners wanting to use planning and development. And that is in part because it, um, it sets a standard that makes development more expensive and costly. And it's a bit of a, um, open negotiation then with the city that can have the impact of accelerating that, that impact on the project. And so, um, it is hard, um, it is really hard. You know, this, this question, um, has come up a little bit in our site plan review thresholds that the council directed us to look at. What are the projects that don't happen because of our development framework and our expectations? And I would, my initial reaction is I'd put that in that category. It's, it's, it's hard to presume that projects would choose that option. That's, um, that, you know, that it's, that's shifting away from the whole structure of, uh, the community sets forth our vision and our master plan about what we expect. And then our ordinances seek to achieve that. Planning and development is, um, to, to drive more projects to there is a bit of saying, you know, our ordinances aren't giving us the development we want. And, um, that, that's probably more of an indication that it's time to look at updating our ordinances rather than trying to drive more projects to plan.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. Um, you know, in, in looking forward to, to bringing this forward and, and in combination with the passage of, of Prop C and other things that have happened in our city recently, um, it's made me really optimistic that we can take steps to be the inclusive, welcoming community that I know many of us want to be. And are we going to get everyone that comes into the city to want to live here? No, but pre pandemic, that was eighty thousand people. We can't build housing for all of them, um, just with one new designation. But this is a really powerful way to create housing that appeals to much of where we see the projections for growth in our city. And, you know, will some people, um, potentially make some money building it? Sure, absolutely. Um, is that, uh, you know, does it mean that, that they're the folks who are driving this? Absolutely not. I think there's a lot of great models out there about why this is such a great idea to move forward. And I don't want to see us limit ourselves to one part of the city, even if it's a terrific candidate, because there could be six of them. There could be four of them. There could, who knows? But that's the point in sending this to planning, to engage in this process and. And, and I'm, you know, done apologizing for wanting to see change and, and more housing and, and more opportunity. I think that was done a long time ago. But, you know, it, it's, will, will this be, will there be change? Yes, but, um, but it's really kind of the point, because it makes it a place where we can welcome more people. And um, and hopefully lots of folks will give us their opinions about how we can make that um, the best possible kind of change for us.
Further discussions? Roll call vote, please, starting with council member Rumlooy.
Councilmember Rumlooy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayner?
Oh.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Griswold?
Yes.
Councilmember Song?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Regina?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer? Absent? Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Motion carries.
She, uh, councilmember Iyer is a.
Is an attendee.
Is an, is an attendee.
Councilmember Iyer?
Yes, thank you. I got moving and then I, I got back in as an attendee right at the wrong time. I vote yes.
All right.
Motion carries.
Thank you. DC 3 resolution accepting the results of the 2020 November elections and recognizing President-elect Joseph Biden and Vice President-elect Kamala Harris, moved by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Regina. Discussion of DC 3. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Uh, this resolution is a response to the number of days that have passed without our soon-to-be former president conceding defeat. It is a response to the many incendiary and frankly, dangerous public remarks that have been made questioning the results of our elections. Um, our city council tries not to weigh in on national issues, but there's a very real local connection here. This resolution references national leaders, President-elect Joe Biden and Vice President-elect Kamala Harris. But this is really about all of us who participate in our democracy as constituents, voters, candidates, or elected officials. Compared to other places, Michigan is pretty lucky. We passed a ballot initiative to expand opportunities to vote by mail. We have a Secretary of State who actually believes in expanded voting rights. Here in Ann Arbor, we are living in a world of privilege, where we can fund extra ballot drop boxes, extra clerk hours, and we arrange other conveniences to make sure everyone can vote. This is the foundation of our democracy from top to bottom, that everyone has the right to vote and that when we do, it counts for something. Our whole system is threatened when our leaders refuse to accept the results of an election or when they make excuses for why those results should not matter. These last two weeks, I've probably been most upset by the voices I am not hearing. I believe that every elected leader in this country, no matter what office they hold, should feel an obligation and responsibility to speak out about the significance and validity of the November elections. I am still waiting for many of the loudest voices, leaders at the national level, to speak out in defense of our democracy, no matter what side they are on. Those of us at this virtual table may have a relatively small voice, but we have skin in the game. Everyone who believes in our democracy has skin in the game. This is hopefully not a very controversial resolution. It's simply reiterating that the results of democratic elections determine leaders moving forward. As a council, we are simply acknowledging the same reality that has already been acknowledged by a long list of world leaders who have congratulated and recognized President-elect Joe Biden and Vice President-elect Kamala Harris. So I hope we can all support this. And I want to thank Councilmember Grant, Griswold, Mayor Taylor, and Councilmember Grant for um, quickly volunteering to co-sponsor this. I, it's important to me. I, I know that a lot of members of our community are anxious about this. I, I share, I share the anxiety of so many in this community. And I just, I, I'm looking forward to January. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayner.
I just wanted to briefly say thank you for amending this from its first iteration, because um, you know, I, I have, I have no doubt, and I mean, I spoke to this prior to the election and so on, uh, that um, Ms. Bowdre, uh, Mr. Gombowski, and Mr. Kestenbaum, and so on, the clerks in our area uh, run it, or, or their, their work is beyond reproach. And of course, we're also fortunate that we have paper ballots, so there can be no questioning that, the results of our elections. Um, and so I certainly support that. Um, but you know, I, 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 I have to be honest. I spoke with a early, with CM Nelson, who was an early sponsor of this, or the sponsor of this initially. And I was unhappy with parts of it, and so I appreciate the change, because um, you know, I can't speak to clerks in other states or, or election officials in other states who have digital ballots and so on, and their own, their own woes and don't have the privilege that she so eloquently just spoke to. So I appreciate the changes and, and it's much more supportable in this form. So thank you.
Councilmember Regina.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and I just want to also echo some sentiment thanking Councilmember Nelson for bringing this forward. Um, I think that this is absolutely an issue that has been pausing uh, quite a bit of, um, of, you know, stress in our community. I think, um, I, I also just want to echo the, uh, in reference to some of the public comments that were made earlier, that this is a reference to a national issue. Uh, I, I echo Councilmember Nelson that this has very serious local implications. Um, up until a few hours ago, there was actually a lawsuit um, seeking to invalidate the votes uh, of Washtenaw County voters and Wayne County voters and Ingham County voters. This absolutely has local implications. Um, and so I want to commend her for bringing this forward. Um, and also just echo, I think, um, things that I've said publicly already, which are, uh, which is that it, it's incredibly disheartening and I think frankly, dangerous to see the President of the United States, um, not only refusing to accept the outcome of a free and fair election, but actively seeking to undermine it. That is not what we do in the United States of America. It's not what we do in, in a republic like the United States. And, and uh, I, I think it's incredibly important that we add our voice uh, to, to this conversation and, and acknowledge uh, uh, Vice, or President-elect Joe Biden and Vice President-elect Kamala Harris. Um, if it is welcome, I would love to be added as a co-sponsor. Um, and I will also add that, at least in the version that I'm looking at, there does appear to be an extra comma after Columbia in the final resolved clause. Um, and so that requires a, a, a change.
That was because of a quick edit between UK and England.
Yeah, to better, uh, co-sponsors are, uh, you know, folks, folks on the floor, I think, are uh, without restriction, able to offer themselves as co-sponsors by stating so or communicating to the clerk during. Councilmember Grant.
Uh, I think everyone almost said what I was going to say, so I just want to thank Councilmember Nelson for bringing this forward. I appreciate um, the outreach to, to so many of us to be able to co-sponsor this. Um, like many people at this table in our community. Um, I think our county had so many people who wanted to help with the election that people had to, like myself, had to go to other counties to help with the, with elections there. Um, we're so fortunate to, to be um, in that position. And, um, and we were targeted. It, it absolutely is relevant to our community, because, because we were named specifically um, in a lawsuit and the, and the decisions that we are able to make as a body to achieve the kinds of initiatives and kind of community we want to live in depend on what happens at the federal government. Um, so, you know, I know we have, for example, lots of uh, plans if, if stimulus money comes forward to help us achieve, achieve carbon neutrality, for example. So it, it seems really relevant, but, but most importantly, I think it's, um, I just appreciate the opportunity as a council to um, articulate those values of them.
Councilmember Dish.
Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Dish.
I just wanted to note that um, we had a tremendous head start here in Michigan on absentee voting because of the work of the League of Women Voters and all of the citizens who participated in getting that initiative on the ballot and then voting for it in 2018. And then because we had such a responsive city clerk, um, in Ms. Bowdre in implementing the nights and weekends provisions and all of these other things that she's been working on before this election, before the pandemic, before all of the frankly, hell that has broken loose in this election cycle. And so I think it's really important to, yes, we are privileged here, but we are privileged because we work hard for it. We work hard for our citizenship. Um, and I thank you, Councilmember Nelson, for bringing this forward. I would like, please, to be added as a co-sponsor.
Councilmember Briggs.
Everybody has spoken very eloquently. I'll just say thank you to Councilmember Nelson, to Mayor Taylor, to the others who are co-sponsoring and asked to be added as a co-sponsor as well.
Councilmember Griswold.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Nelson. And, and one thing that, that hasn't been specifically stated that I think makes this very relevant to, um, to Ann Arbor is the transition process that is not taking place is negatively impacting our safety in terms of COVID as well as the national security of our country on the world stage as well as internally. Um, and so again, thank you, Councilmember Nelson. And I hope that this can be a model resolution and we can encourage other communities to uh, adopt it if need be, if we don't have the transition in place in the next few days. Thanks.
Further discussion? I'd just like to, you know, very briefly add my two cents on, you know, I'm glad that this is uh, moving forward as it, as it will, you know, we um, uh, we, we live in a, in an infuriating time, a time when, um, you know, our politics is broken and our systems are breaking and it's uh, not by accident, it's by intent. Uh, and it is just, well, it's infuriating that this is where we are, uh, that this is the sort of resolution that, you know, city council of 120,000 people uh, feels a need to, uh, need to pass. Uh, you know, we as a, as a country have a lot of, uh, uh, a lot of repair to do. Uh, and right now, there's a lot of folks um, in government and outside of government who are bent on um, increasing uh, the, the, the disrepair. Um, and it's, uh, it's, it's just simply not right. Um, I think what we need to do as a council and as a community, as a nation, is to recognize that, you know, the, our democracy is, is real when people vote. It matters. Uh, and, you know, truth is, uh, is important. Um, as we are seeing time and time again, uh, you know, this was a free and a fair election. Albeit in a, uh, in a, you know, system that's designed uh, that, uh, to frustrate the will of the majority, but uh, that's, that's a topic for another day. In any event, um, this resolution recognizes uh, what is plain and obvious. And that is that uh, President-elect Biden is in fact the President-elect. Um, and, you know, I think all, uh, all Americans need to see it. Further discussion? Uh, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? It is approved. DC 4 Resolution directing the Planning Commission to study and update the South State Street Corridor Plan adopted by City Council in July 2015, 2013, including examining the feasibility to accommodate a future Transit Supported Development zoning district, moved by Councilmember Hayner, seconded by Councilmember Griswold. Discussion, please, of DC 4, Councilmember Hayner.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm, like I said, I'm, this was brought forward as an alternative to DC 2. So I'm sorry that my comments at the, uh, beginning of the agenda setting didn't, didn't bring that about uh, during the meeting, because o- obviously DC 2 was satisfactory for, for the majority, and so we're going to go with that. Um, DC 4 was written because the DC 2 was too broad. There were global changes that I don't, that I believe it's, it's suggesting that we make global changes using ordinance revisions instead of the master planning process or even a partial master planning process like DC 4, which offers updating of the South State Street Corridor Plan uh, like DC 2, but without um, amending this called for and directed the City Planning Commission to conduct a robust, robust uh, public engagement process. It also called for very specific uh, recommendations from the City Planning Commission. But most importantly, DC 4 um, spoke to and tried to build upon already approved documents that are already part of our master plan process and very specifically spoke to transit-oriented development in very specific ways. And I think one of the uh, perhaps shames that this body, and maybe shames is too strong of a word, but uh, uh, concerns that this body should have is that we've been sitting on a, a master plan, a state street area plan since 2013, a, a transportation plan since 2009, and have failed to act in any meaningful way to push these things forward well before I was on council. And so that's a problem, that it's taken seven to 11 years to act on these things that the public told us they wanted, seven to 11 years ago. And so I brought this forward in a very specific way to build upon the approval of the documents that existed in our master plan. And one of, one of the things that was interesting to me in when, when, when I reviewed this in preparing for this was that our land use goals, objectives, and the action statements, uh, goal, and, and they're laudable goals. That goal B was to promote land use designs that reduce the reliance on the automobile. Well, we all know that's also part of A20 now. And uh, and goal E to encourage uh, commercial employment centers that promote and de, promote pedestrian activity and de-emphasize the automobile and so on. And that's perfectly fine. And of course, transit-oriented development uh, uh, may do that. Um, what, what, what the challenge is for me is that in that, in the time because the, since these land use goals and the objectives were adopted by council way back when, we have uh, a past on many, many amazing opportunities to implement what the people ask for. And very specifically in some cases, and I only speak to one in my ward, because first and foremost, I serve the people in Ward 1. And, and that is the notion of the total passing on any kind of consideration of transit-oriented development on the lower town area and also on the MichCon site. Uh, where we've, uh, you know, in, in the lower town area, we've done the exact opposite of reducing reliance on the automobile. We've built, uh, we've, we've allowed the construction of, um, almost 1,700 parking spaces within a quarter-mile radius. Um, and that is the exact opposite of what we've called for in the land use master plan, uh, northeast, uh, all the plans, Northeast Area Plan, uh, Lower Town specifically, and so on. And so I'm very disappointed. So I brought this forward because those goals and objectives are, are, are valid and, and this would have built upon them. And so, uh, you know, I, I'll take a roll call vote so we can, we can see who is interested in respecting the process that left, that was before us, um, and, and, uh, or not. So that, that's where this stands. Um, it was very specific. And if you read it, you'll see that, and it speaks to a very specific part of our community that has already been asking for transit-oriented development and, and has huge, uh, would produce huge benefits, I believe, in that area alone. It's a great place to start a very expensive and potentially costly experiment. Um, and it also, it referred to Watts 2035 and so on. And so I, I feel that it was much more specific and, and more appropriate resolution. I'm, I'm sorry we didn't consider them together.
Councilor Griswold.
Um, is there any way to adopt um, some or all of this resolution with the goal of fast-tracking the State Street Corridor so that work could begin there while we're continuing to refine the, the transit corridors in other parts of the city? And I, I guess that's a, a question for staff.
Mr. Crawford.
What would we do if we wanted to fast-track the State Street Corridor?
Well, uh, I'll, I'll take first crack at that.
Please.
Well, then, nothing is being, uh, i- i- in the process so far as I understand it, what staff has been directed to do. We're not fast-tracking or tracking any corridor at this point. Um, we're, we're developing a district that could be considered on different corridors at some point in the future. Um, either through adoption of that ordinance, if recommended by the Planning Commission, or uh, independently by City Council or any board and commission of the city who deals with this uh, after that ordinance is adopted, or potentially pursued by individual property owners through, uh, through the rezoning process. Um, no corridor is being promoted over another at this point. Um, that conversation could take place through the creation of the ordinance that the Planning Commission feels it's appropriate to tie that recommendation to a piece of geography. But, and I'm going to let Brett correct me if I'm wrong, but we have not gotten to that point yet, nor that would, conversation would be premature at this point.
Yeah, I would, um, I would agree. Um, I think.
I think if if the desire was to fast-track the consideration of transit-oriented zoning to this corridor over other corridors, I would say that the action would probably be to modify the previous resolution to designate a geography that you think is that you would like that to happen. I think this resolution would be taking a focused approach, but it would probably be taking a step backwards towards realizing that zoning because it would be first some process to reevaluate the recommendations in that corridor plan that already had already guided the city towards that sort of ordinance development.
And I think it's fair to say, too, that I think all of us realize that the development of the zoning district and its basis in part in the in the State Street plan and some of the conversations that have taken place. There's no question it's going to be evaluated in in relation to the state and, you know, state, South State Street area. I think we all understand that, whether it comes forward tied to that geography from the planning commission or with a recommendation that the city pursue an evaluation of that area for rezoning. I would be surprised if that wasn't part of the evaluation that's done with the ordinance creation.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I just don't want to take any action that's going to delay the development on State Street, given all the work that's already been done.
Understood. Councilmember Briggs.
So while I appreciate where Councilmember Hayner is coming from with this, I mean, I think he's he's right in observing that there's a lot of work that's been done in the South State Street area plan, and there's pretty clear guidance there. I think that where I would differ and was part of the DC two is that we've already had a really robust planning process, and there's evidence of of this throughout many of our planning documents, going back to, as you mentioned, 11 years ago on the land use element. And so I think it's incumbent upon us, you know, as a new council to, you know, to be working on those recommendations and to not be limiting it to a geographic area, but to be talking about it holistically across our community and and having the conversation about how that might differ a little bit so that we can we can understand how South State might differ from Stadium or or different places across the community. So, you know, when I offered the amendment in DC two around community engagement, it's not because I want to revisit the planning process. I think the planning process has has happened. I think that there's 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 a clear support for this in multiple areas of our planning documents that we just haven't acted on the recommendations. For me, it's a matter of wanting to make sure that because some of these conversations have happened a long time ago, that we have the opportunity to, you know, bring those conversations to the forefront and 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 take the time to, you know, to catch those folks up that that aren't glued to the planning commission's screens on their on their Tuesday nights. You know, I've been privileged to be to be there every every Tuesday night, and I think the discussions are great, but I also know that the only people who really there's as a relatively small portion of people who look at the planning commission agenda and find out about it know that there's going to be a discussion on transit-supported, you know, district. And so I think we notice a little bit differently if we're having a conversation, a community conversation, a community engagement. So I think we'll bring more people into the conversation and get more meaningful feedback about, you know, some of the things that Councilmember Hayner has expressed concerns around in terms of just the the fine tuning of what an ordinance might look like, which is where we need to be going right now, in my opinion. So that's why I'm not supportive of this, but I think we will we'll be talking about South State Street soon because there's a lot of lot of effort there.
Councilmember Redina.
Thank you. Yeah, and I also I think Councilmember Hayner for his work on this. I also am, I think, struggling to to support this simply because I think the previous resolution that we passed tonight is is relatively inclusive of this of this work already. I think it brings forward some of the necessary public engagement pieces per Councilmember Briggs or amendment to to make sure that there is still robust public engagement. And and I I think that there's my understanding, and I'm still relatively new to this, is that, you know, with our previous resolution encompassing a broader segment of the community, I think we could come back, planning commission could come back with a recommendation. We're asking them to make a recommendation and to develop a plan to prioritize the South State Street area. But ultimately, I would like to see planning commission's process play out and and for us to to see the recommendation that comes back from them rather than passing two resolutions that could potentially provide differing guidance from council.
Councilmember Hayner.
Well, thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm still going to ask for a roll call vote because I want on the record as as what, you know, what the look is and how, you know, what what kind of process we support as a community, as a council, what kind of community process do we support? Because, you know, we've we've thrown around this number that we want to, you know, oh, hey, our goal is to accommodate 80 to 100,000 people. Let's get them out of their cars for all the benefits that are legitimate around that. But, you know, where was that question asked that we want to double the population or essentially to undouble the non-transient, you know, population of our city? That's a big, that's a big question to have. And if this is one of the tools that is going to cut into that 80 to 100,000 units, you know, that's a question that's bigger than ordinance revisions, in my opinion, which is why I brought this forward. So thanks for your consideration of it.
Councilmember Ramlovi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little perplexed by a couple of the comments that have been made by our new members here. I read this resolution and much of it reads the same as DC two. This one is just a little bit more prescribed. This one's asking to use a lot of the work that's already been done in executing it. We've already said many times that our challenges will not be answered with one solution. It's going to require multitudes of different solutions in order to address the challenges that are facing us. Why would we not apply all the tools at our disposal, one that's been sitting around for many years and a part of our town that could use rejuvenation? We have Briarwood Mall over there that, from a businessperson's standpoint, looks like it's on its last legs. Like, I don't know how much longer that that model they have over there is going to continue for. It won't be long. And we have talked, there's been talks with with Spark and 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 other folks in the area of creating a TIF for the area and revitalizing so we can have another concentrated area of of our city that can employ people and house people and 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 provide the amenities for a quality life. I'm just confused as to why people would object to this. I just haven't heard anything that really makes a whole lot of sense to me. I feel that this is is it provides synergy with DC two and probably at a much lower cost and probably with better results because a lot of work has already been done. I applaud Councilmember Hayner for bringing this forward, and I ask to be added as a co-sponsor.
Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. I appreciate that Councilmember Hayner put up this alternative ahead of time so that it could, you know, that it wasn't a surprise that it could be considered in tandem. And I I know, you know, now that that we have some members who are more experienced that, you know, it could have, to my mind, been brought forward as a substitute resolution for the whole and wasn't. So so that, you know, maybe next time. But
Legal told me not to. They asked me not to.
But I think that answers, you have the right to do, you know, there's a process. So but I think to Councilmember Ramlovi's point, I think that that question that he just raised was asked and answered by staff very clearly that 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 the goals of DC four are encompassed in the broader DC two, which is why, which is why I supported DC two. And I honestly, I appreciate that that Councilmember Hayner brought it brought it forward with that with plenty of time for us to think about it and think about a more narrow versus a broader approach. I don't because I believe the goals of DC of DC four are are accomplished by the passage of DC two, I don't, I see it as redundant and potentially in conflict, and that's why I won't be supporting it.
Councilmember Redina. I'm sorry, Mr. Crawford.
Mayor, if I could just mention, Councilmember Hayner brought this resolution up, and given the proximity to the meeting, it was raised, I ask him to put it on the agenda, not as a substitute, but put it on agenda for transparency reasons so that everybody could see it upfront and understand what it was doing in advance of the discussion, just for clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Councilmember Redina.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have maybe a clarifying question and to staff potentially, and I think in response maybe to to Councilmember Ramlovi's comments, I don't disagree with the notion that the South State Street corridor is absolutely ripe for transfer oriented development. I fully support the concept of it there. I think my my struggle is that I see similarly to Councilmember Grant that that much of what this resolution is seeking to accomplish is already encompassed in our previous resolution. And so I guess my question would be, what would be the implications of us passing two resolutions directing planning commission to to look at this, to look at these? When when they could potentially, there could potentially be areas, I haven't I haven't gone line by line through here, where there could be conflicting direction on the same issue.
I would I would say the answer to that is that this would direct master plan work, whereas the previous resolution limits our work to implementation and ordinance work. The master plan process is by its nature much more open, broad, like deliberately time-intensive to allow a lot of conversation about what the city's goals are. So I would say that that would be a that would add master a master planning work program element to that doesn't exist based on the previous resolution. I just, but I do want to just be crystal clear. Whatever resolution comes out of DC two will come with some recommendations of how we think that will have applicability across the city or challenges. I can assure you, South State will come with some specific language. I can't, I can't predict what the plan, I can't speak for the planning commission, nor obviously, obviously for you, but I just want to be clear that South State will be definitely front and center in how we consider responding to your direction in the previous resolution.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Dish.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Ramlovi's, I think, good question about what is the relationship of this resolution to DC two? And it, I think it's actually difficult to answer that question because it is, seems to me that it either limits DC two by restricting the focus to a particular area, so it's a limitation, or it's redundant to DC two because its goals are encompassed in DC, because the goals of DC four are already encompassed by DC two. Or it's going over, the the language in DC four calls for a study and update of the South State Corridor Plan, which seems to ask planning commission to revisit and reopen something that the planning commission already wants to take as a starting point in its work on TOD. So it's then a step back. So either it's redundant or it limits or backtracks. So if it's a redundant, I don't feel like I need to vote for it. And if it limits or backtracks, I don't want to vote for it.
I got Councilmember Ramlovi and Hayner on the queue, and I forget, Councilmember Ramlovi, are you, are you, is this number two or number three for you?
Surprisingly, just number two.
So are you.
So, you know, I, I think staff had answered, thank you. I think staff had answered, and I appreciate Brett for explaining that to us, the differences here with DC four and DC two. DC four would be more involved, have the participation that we'd like to see. There was amendment put onto DC two to help with that because it's not prescribed as DC four is. DC four, I think, is the proper way to approach these type of changes and to have the participation with the community and a holistic approach to these land use issues. DC two, I think, is 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 fine. I don't think DC four negates what we passed with DC two. That's just not the way things typically work. I don't think the passage of DC four does anything to DC two. I think we just simply apply more hands-on this issue, and we don't leave anything left behind. And so, you know, I urge my colleagues to support this, just as as we supported DC two. This is only only would make good sense and good government.
Councilmember Hayner, I believe you've spoken twice. You want to?
That's fine. I just I object to the notion that asking for something that's been sitting around since 2009 is a step backwards. I reject that characterization of this resolution.
Further discussion? Mr. Delacorte?
Yeah, I just want to be clear in reading the resolutions, the way it's stated, and the South Street Plan being a component of the city's master plan, passing DC four adds a does add a considerable component of legally required work to be done to update that plan and would significantly forestall the execution of DC two if it is anticipated that it would need to be done first. That is a significant, significant undertaking in addition to what was done in DC two. DC two assumes, similar to what Councilmember Dish said, that the foundation in the master plan and the South Street Plan is good and is a good basis to work on to develop the ordinance for adoption for council and with the planning commission to work with. Passage of DC four basically says we we can't rely on that previous work that's been done. We don't believe we have the foundation we need to move forward for the decisions related to transit-oriented development, either in the South State area or anywhere in this community, and would significantly forestall the work on DC two if it were to pass.
Councilmember Iron.
Have the conditions been met where I could call the question?
That is a good question.
I think we've been discussing it for 30 minutes, and I just don't know if everyone has had a chance to speak. Who would like a chance to speak? One time.
Sure. I don't know the rule on call the question, I'm afraid. We've not done that very much. Is it 30 minutes?
30 minutes.
Thank you. So it's 30 minutes, and then I think the queue is cleared, and then people who have not yet spoken have an opportunity to speak. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I think that's Nelson and myself, if I'm not mistaken. Councilmember Nelson, do you wish to speak on this matter?
Yes, I'd be happy to speak on this matter. What, I have a question for Mr. Delacorte. What elements of this of DC four could be edited out to remove the revisiting of the master plan? Because I think the point that what I'm hearing Councilmember Hayner say is that this plan has been elaborated on and worked through and sort of perseverated on for quite some time, and he's suggesting that we move forward. And I actually agree, it's in Ward four, it's an area that we've talked about a lot. What aspects of DC four are problematic in terms of asking us to revisit the master plan? Because I do appreciate that the wording is slightly different than DC two, but to me, it's effectively asking for the same thing. Could we simply remove a line? And to to fix this particular problem that you've identified, that it's it's demanding a great deal more work?
I'm reading through it here. I want to be very careful because I haven't had much of an opportunity to review it. much of an opportunity to review it. But I think any inference that the South Street Plan, which is a component of the master plan, if, if I'm, and, and I do believe that's an adopted component of it, would have to be eliminated. And if I'm reading it correctly at that point, what you end up with is DC two. If all of those, if all of those conflicts are removed, and what you're asking is that the Planning Commission just evaluate certain pieces of information in their process of creating an ordinance for your consideration, then at that point, you would, you would eliminate any conflicts with DC two and be left with the same direction. And that, and that's without going through a line by line.
I, I would agree with that as the author and sponsor of this, that, that is in there for a very specific reason, to fulfill what I see as the requirements of not only decent community conversation, but the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and, and the processes by which we move forward with global changes to our zoning. And so, that doesn't exist. That's just how I feel. So that's how I wrote it.
And there, and there's, and there's some very, there's, there's some very specific language in there, directing the Planning Commission what to include in the ordinance. Without them actually having to have these community conversations that one everybody has, council is, is determining what the Planning Commission should include in their ordinance, prior to that public engagement actually even happening, or weighing the trade offs of what including those in a transit oriented development may or may not result in. And I would, I would caution against that as well.
All right.
Did we, I, I, I have, I have one more question, which is that, um, so what do you, what do you deem to be the significance of the amendment that we added to DC two? Because what, what you just said sounds to me like it, the part that is burdensome is the public engagement. And...
No, not by, no.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thanks.
A question has been called. I'm going to decline to speak further on this. So I guess we have a roll call. So Councilmember Ramlovi, the question's been called, so I'm afraid.
Is it possible to move to table this?
That's a good question. I don't know which, Mr. Postema, I guess I'm looking at you. The question's been called. Then there's a motion to table. So is a motion table always in order? I'm afraid I don't know.
I don't believe so. I think that the, the, the motion to call, you could always, some aspect of this could, could be brought back in a different, but, but the procedural on that, I don't, I don't have the preference. I don't have the...
On the call, on the question to call?
So, Councilmember Ramlovi, let me suggest this. The question's been called. Let's roll with the vote. If you think that the resolution is capable of some kind of amendment or alteration, which would, you know, would, would speak to you, bring it back again.
Do we take a vote on the, the call to question, though, the two thirds that are required?
Is that right?
Yes. Yes.
All right. So let's, uh, roll, uh, vote on a call to question. Council, uh, roll call vote, please turn to Councilmember Ramlovi.
Councilmember Ramlovi?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hainer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Griswold?
No.
Councilmember Song? Councilmember Redina?
Yes.
Excuse me, Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Roll call vote, please, on the main motion's amended. I'm sorry. My apologies. I was getting my, I was getting them confused. Thank you very much. Roll call vote, please, on the main motion.
I, I apologize, but the, but the motion to table is not, is not an option.
I mean, I defer to Mr. Postema.
Yeah, I can't answer that immediately, Councilmember Ramlovi. I, the, 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 the preferences, I would, it would just take a while. If you would, you want to take an adjournment, I could, I can call the preferences, but I, but I...
I, I got the time.
I, I'd rather, I'd withdraw it before I did that. I don't mind my amendment being voted, this resolution being voted down. It's, it's clear what sort of path we're headed down here.
I'd like clarification on that.
Mr. Postema, how long is that going to take you?
If we took a short break, I could get back to you and, and probably get an answer. I need to, I need to...
About two minutes?
Sure.
All right. Let's take a short break. It's 10:34. Let's meet back at 10:36.
Really? Yeah, I, uh...
Back after a short break, Mr. Postema?
I called Attorney Frost in, and if you could bring him in. I wanted him to look at a specific Roberts Rules provision on, on whether it yields. I believe it did, but by Roberts Rules is at home, and I'm in the office tonight. So I wanted him to address that rule, and he's identified it for me. And Attorney Frost, if you could go through that.
Yes, it's Section 16 of Roberts Rules. The motion to call the previous question does yield to the motion to lay on the table. So that would have, would be in order. Now, that, that motion has already been passed, however, so I think it's in the discretion of the chair how they want to proceed there.
So the...
The, the motion to lay on the, on the table would have taken precedence over the motion to call the question, which I believe was Ramlovi's original question.
So, uh, my recollection is that Councilmember Ramlovi made the inquiry with respect to tabling prior to the vote on the call to question. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
All right. I'm going to, I'll, I'll, I'll roll with the motion to table then. So, Councilmember Ramlovi?
Uh, thank you for that clarification and the time to get to the bottom of it. I do move to, to table DC four.
Seconded. For the reason?
For the reason that this was added to the agenda late. There was not enough discussion given, and we'd like more time to work with staff in order to bring this back with more, more knowledge and more direction.
Seconded by Councilmember Griswold, I gather. Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Ramlovi.
Councilmember Ramlovi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hainer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
No.
Councilmember Griswold?
You were muted, Kathy.
Councilmember Griswold?
Yes. My apologies.
Councilmember Song?
No.
Councilmember Grant?
No.
Councilmember Redina?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Iyer?
No.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
No.
Motion fails.
Uh, I'm going to roll back with the question having been called. Does anyone have any objection if I see that as, that, if I resume that nine to two vote having been proper? Does anyone have any objection to that? Seeing none, roll call vote, please turn to Councilmember Ramlovi.
Councilmember Ramlovi?
And this is on the main motion?
My apologies. Yes, this is on the main motion.
Yes.
Councilmember Hainer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
No.
Councilmember Griswold?
Yes.
Councilmember Song?
No.
Councilmember Grant?
No.
Councilmember Redina?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Iyer?
No.
Councilmember Nelson?
No.
Councilmember Briggs?
No.
Motion fails.
Are there communications today from our city attorney?
Yes, Mayor, if you would indulge me, I, I would like to talk about a matter. But first, I understand, for this weekend, it was a great weight of history on me, perhaps for the reasons that Councilmember Nelson raised the election, other issues about five council members coming on, and this being, I think, council members 41 through 45, that, that I've had the pleasure to counsel and advise. But in any case, I had a lot of writing to do this weekend, and I went to a place of inspiration for me in Ann Arbor. Be familiar to council members in the fourth ward, that is Mushroom Park. It has a 200 to 250 year old white oak there. It's a stunning tree. And I was interested in that because it always had a great influence on me. In fact, in kindergarten, they marched us right down, this being the mid 60s. They marched us down, and the kindergarten teacher said, this tree was here long before Ann Arbor was here, and it will be here long after all of us are on earth. This was a kindergarten teacher in the public school, had a little discourse, and the end result of it was that we had to be useful in our lives. And that issue of the passage of time and usefulness leads me to my focus tonight, and that is gratitude and taking time tonight to thank Senior Assistant City Attorney for 30 years of dedicated service to the city. Her last day will be on Thursday. She began in 1990. Mayor Jernigan was the mayor. That was, I believe, four mayors ago. A city administrator was Dell Morgsdorf, and I believe that was six city administrators ago. And I believe that was maybe 75 to 80 council members ago. And I want to thank her for her work, her dedicated work during this time of drafting ordinances for all of those city administrators, of prosecuting cases in the 15th District Court, of having an expertise in tax tribunal work, which has created great revenue, and an entire body of work that is known throughout the state to the benefit of municipalities and the taxing structure. And she's done this, she's been a dedicated public servant, and she loved being a public servant, and she loved the city of Ann Arbor. So I want to publicly thank her for her work. And it's just a reminder that, and there may be some people in the city who've been here longer than 30 years, and there are, are a few, but that people come and work for the city to do the city's work, to do the things that you ask to be done, and they provide great value and usefulness, as my kindergarten teacher said, usefulness during that time. And so I want to thank Kristin Larkin for that work. And again, feeling the great weight of history, the, the tree in Mushroom Park helped me frame some of these thoughts, and I, I recommend to the public to go look at that tree. But again, thank you, Kristin Larkin, for your work in the city attorney's office.
Thank you. We have a force, the clerks report of communications, petitions, and referrals. May I have a motion, please, to approve the clerk's report moved by Council Member Ramlovi, seconded by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion of the clerk's report. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk's report is approved. We now come to the Public Comment General Time. Public Comment General Time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at Public Comment General Time, one need not have signed up in advance. To speak at Public Comment General Time, please dial 877-853-5247. That is 877-853-5247. Once you're connected, please enter the meeting ID, 936-1808-3853. That is 936-1808-3853. When you're connected, please enter star nine, star nine, to indicate that you wish to speak. When it is your turn to speak, our clerk will identify you by the last three digits of your telephone number. When is your turn to speak? You will have three minutes in which to speak. So please pay close attention to the time. As, our clerk will notify you when there are 30 seconds remaining, and when your time is up. When your time is up, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Is there anyone who would like to speak at Public Comment?
Caller with the phone number ending 556, do you have a comment?
Hi, this is Ralph McKee again. You're probably going to be sick of hearing from me, but I have a few things to say about the TOD discussion. To Councilmember Grant, I, I hear you say at the beginning, and I appreciate that, that it was not a, this is not a done deal, but it would be really hard to believe your first statement if you listen carefully to your later comments. I would encourage you to go listen to them. As to process, the, the, the master plan ward reps have made very clear to the Planning Commission that they view TOD as total usurpation of the master plan process. I know you may not agree with that, but that's how they feel. I appreciate that Councilmember Briggs attempted to add some public engagement. I heard a lot of pushback, both from staff and from Councilmember, new Councilmember Song, saying, let's save some dollars, let's go talk to our own constituents, and let's not spend any money on public engagement. You're effectively doing something that, that would affect the entire city. And to not do serious public engagement, that's flabbergasting to me. The other intellectual dishonest part of it, we're still talking about, on the one hand, that this is going to be market rate housing, but people are still talking about affordability. The seniors and, and teachers and nurses aren't going to be able to afford the housing that's going to be built this way. If you don't bake in affordability within it, like they're doing... If you don't bake in affordability within it, like they're doing in Minneapolis or Arlington or several other places, you're not gonna get anything that any of those people can, can move into. So, please, apply some intellectual rigor here. The, uh, on, a- as to the, the PUDs, uh, it really bothers me to hear staff discourage the use of PUDs that, that would help, that would maybe make it more, uh, costly for developers. We're being taxed to pay for affordable housing and you don't wanna have the developers pay for any of it? It, it's shocking to me to hear that. And it, the, the land speculation that's gonna happen here is gonna make a lot of people rich and we aren't even interested in baking that in or forcing PUDs to tap that money? We'd rather tax residents. Uh, I, it, the whole thing is staggering to me and I hope you really think about some of those points before it comes back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in two zero five, do you have a comment?
Hello, this is Joe Spaulding out in Oakland, California. Uh, just wanted to say that, uh, um, very interesting conversations in terms of affordability and, uh, um, bad faith, um, deploying of, uh, this trickle-down housing analogy. It's pretty reminiscent of a lot of the, um, city council and planning commission meetings that I'm seeing out in my neck of the woods. Um, when it comes to transit-oriented housing development, it's very good to see the council take the approach of wanting to have a, uh, robust polit- public engagement, um, period here. And then also to note, note that it doesn't necessarily have to cost an arm and a leg. It does take work. It doesn't have to cost a whole heck of a lot of money. Um, so, um, it, it's, uh, you know, as, as someone who appreciates, uh, council member Nelson's, um, uh, resolution involving the, uh, state of national affairs and the presidential race here, it's kind of, uh, very good to see, um, that type of, uh, um, public engagement kind of go through here. Anyway, um, I, speaking of the, um, national situation, I did wanna mention on this call that Trump could, you know, descend down an escalator to a fiery layer, um, somewhere beneath Mar-a-Lago and his ideas would still be haunting, uh, suburbia across the country. So, um, you know, I, I've said on these calls before that what happens in Ann Arbor can echoed in other places. Um, and it's very important that when it comes to making sure we're looking after all the residents and, uh, doing that type of public engagement when it comes to housing and not just, um, using something like transit-oriented development as an excuse to channel, um, the attention away from the entirety of the city. Um, I, I think that's really, really good because then we can start looking at, you know, numbers in places like Ottawa County where Trump, you know, gained ten thousand votes this election, but Joe Biden gained twenty thousand votes. Um, I see that as a precipice that has to be held and, uh, you know, there's gonna be folks coming in saying all the same NIMBY stuff that I'm hearing out here in California and, uh, trying to convert people back with these racist dog whistles and we've gotta absolutely resist the urge to defeat that. And I've seen a lot of that tonight. I've seen a lot of anti-racism and I'm just, uh, very happy, um, seeing that over there.
Thirty seconds.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number two five three, do you have a comment?
Mayor Taylor and City Council. A huge congrats are in order to our new council members. You've taken a job that a lot of, that will take up a lot of time and effort and it can take a tremendous toll on your personal lives as well. You're gonna, you've gone through the gauntlet and you're sitting at council, so a huge congrats. To be honest, I'm quite optimistic of what this council can achieve. You're quite aware that I prefer a seven-four council that favors development. This current city council composition could very well be ideal for the next four years. And yes, I said four years and not two. I know you don't need advice from me, but if I could give a bit, here it is. Number one, remember that public speakers aren't always aware of all the legal nuances that occur behind closed doors. We may express ideas on what we know, but it's also possible that we don't know all the facts. So although you may disagree with what we say, keep in mind that we might not know the whole story. I'm not asking you to disclose all the behind the seat, behind the scenes stuff, but I'm just asking you to keep that aspect in mind when you raise, when we raise our voices on issues. Number two, when you enter your third or fourth year, be careful when you say the words, "I was elected to do this." It is quite possible that in your third or fourth year, times have changed and feelings from constituents may have changed as well. In other words, make sure to keep in contact with those from your wards so you stay focused on representing them. Number three, you're replacing someone who you either beat in election or someone who stepped aside. Thankfully, local politics is not as horrific as national politics. In local politics, those council members before you had good qualities that people appreciated. You don't have to agree on their political viewpoints, but take the good qualities from former council members and be inspired by them. Number four, lastly, I believe it is important to criticize and even provide good political jabs. I really appreciate a good political jab, but it is important to also thank one another. Make sure to thank one another at times as we are all neighbors. And one last thing, thank you, Councilmember Nelson, for bringing forward the, the stuff about the council, uh, council, President-elect Biden. Uh, it's sad that you have to make a resolution like that, but these are the times we live in and it's quite unfortunate. Uh, but thank you for doing that. Anyways, have a good night. That's just Kai.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in eight nine one, do you have a comment? Caller with the phone number eight nine one, go ahead.
Hi, this is Ed Vilmetti. Um, I have two comments to make. Uh, one is to thank, uh, uh, council member Ayer for calling the question. Um, I appreciate that, uh, discussion needs to happen at the council. Hello, this is Ed.
Sorry about that. My apologies. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to, uh, this is Ed Vilmetti. Um, two comments. One, I'd like to thank, uh, Councilman Ayer for, uh, calling the question, uh, on, on the issue that came up. Uh, I think, uh, council, uh, is well, well helped by learning to debate its, uh, the merits of an issue within a thirty-minute timeframe and, uh, there should be, that should be plenty at this table to, uh, come to a resolution. Uh, second, regarding land speculation, um, I, I hate to remind people that the city of Ann Arbor was founded on land speculation and has created enormous amounts of wealth through land speculation, uh, enormous amounts of concentrated wealth through land speculation and with that concentrated wealth, concentrated political power. And, uh, I, you know, that's a, that's a caution that, um, uh, some people will be better, better off from this, but we've been, we've been speculating on land ever since, uh, the, the founders showed up here, uh, trying to figure out how to make, uh, make, uh, universities show up. So, uh, anyway, uh, thanks, uh, for doing the meeting and, um, I'm, I'm done.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number nine three six.
Hello, um, this is Zachary Story and, um, welcome to all the new council members. Um, I wanted to, uh, begin to talk, uh, tonight on, uh, some of my thoughts of the Ann Arbor Police Department. Um, first of all, I, I wanted to, I, I don't know if there are any or how many Ann Arbor police officers are part of the, uh, Police Officers Association of Michigan, but, um, I wanted to read this quote for, um, their endorsement of President Trump, um, saying, "President Trump restored the sharing of surplus military equipment and tools to our members and at a time when civic leaders are choosing to tolerate televised felonies because a group of people are offended, we need real leadership." Um, now, these, uh, statements make me, um, pretty uncomfortable. Um, the televised felonies that personally I've seen, um, were in the form of, uh, police brutality all over the country. Um, you know, I've seen videos of police officers knocking elderly people to the ground, um, and all sorts of atrocities. Um, now, and specifically to the Ann Arbor Police Department, um, I noticed on their social media play page on Twitter, um, they posted a picture of a police officer in LeBri Plaza, um, with a computer helping people, um, through their court process, um, during COVID, when the, when the courts had closed. And what I, what I see is during a pandemic, police officer who may have, um, arrested this person in the first place, perhaps, is coming by saying, "I will find you, you, you know, I am part of the court process." Um, and make sure that you get your punishment. Um, now, the, the, the police officer that was, um, in this picture, I have witnessed numerous times.
Thirty seconds.
Um, I think that's probably his beat. I, um, asked him a question of why he comes here every day, why the police come here every day. He said, "Well, it's either that or drive around circles." Um, I, I'm running, uh, out of time here. So, uh, next meeting, I'll come back with part two because there is plenty that I, um, didn't get to and I would like.
Time.
Uh, speak about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number zero eight three, do you have a comment?
Who am I on?
Yes, you are.
Good. Well, this is Alan Haber. I'm happy to welcome new people to the council, in particular Erica Briggs and Jeff Hayner onto the, uh, Council of the Commons representatives of the city council. This council has a great opportunity to share in the development of what can be an amazing center of the city with a central park, a civic center, in a framework of mutual aid that can do benefit all over the city. So it's a kind of a steep learning curve for someone, what is actually the commons and the capacity of people that do self-management? That this is really a wonderful opportunity for the new council to see a brighter day in the center of the city that can radiate all over the place. So that's the, uh, the affirmation of the positive. And so, uh, I really hope that you'll see this as an opportunity and that the council of the commons and when the, uh, when the city parks advisory commission and planning commission people get put on and, and all begins to function, there's a community group, the initiating committee that's gotten started to, uh, you know, bring the community forces and the aspirations all together. So this is an opportunity for cooperation and I welcome you to the task. It has, uh, uh, been a long time in coming since two thousand nine, when the A two C two Ann Arbor Community Commons was first put forward in the RFP for the center of the city, uh, library lot. And now we see all the public land in the center of the city to be developed in an integrated way, hopefully with the library and with what happened to next door on the old Y lot and so on. So this is the center of the city and I'm glad to, uh, take the next step forward in behalf of the community initiated committee and everybody else that wants to see something beautiful in the center of our city. So even before my time is up, I say thank you and let's get to work. There are a lot of doers ready to go for it and let's all do it together. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public comment? If you've dialed in, please enter star nine, to be recognized, star nine.
Caller with the phone number ending six seven seven.
You are unmuted. Hi, uh, this is Michelle Hughes. I called in, uh, today and at the beginning of the meeting and unfortunately I could only choose one topic to talk about. I really wanted to, uh, cheerlead about the, um, transit-oriented development. I think this is gonna be a good step forward and, um, but, uh, in the end I chose to talk about defunding the police because I trusted you guys to do the right thing about transit-oriented development and you did. So thank you very much. Um, but I thought I would, you know, I thought I had to call this because I didn't think anyone else was gonna call and remind you to defund the police. So, um, I guess I'll do that again. Please defund the police. Um, but thanks for doing the right thing on transit development. Uh, keep on doing the right thing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending six eight four, do you have a comment?
Yes, hi, this is Eric Sturgis calling from Ann Arbor, Michigan. I just wanted, um, to congratulate the new council members and I also wanted to say I was, uh, very impressed with the civil discourse today and the great, um, discussion of, um, the issues and, and I hope to continue seeing that, um, from council. I wanted to, uh, compliment council member Nelson for DC three. That was, um, extremely necessary and it, uh, feels very good to have our city council, um, on board with that and I hope to see, um, the new people and the people who were on council that were elected, um, be independent voices and have some different votes sometimes. So it would be nice, um, to see that, but again, I appreciate the, uh, civil discourse tonight and, um, you know, it was a little bit shorter meeting than usual. So, good job. Um, thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Mayor, a couple more callers on the line that don't have their hands raised.
If you wish to speak, please enter star nine now. Enter star nine to indicate that you wish to speak at public comment. Seeing no in public comment is closed. Are there communications today from council? Councilmember Redina?
Thanks, and I'll be very, very brief. I just wanted to take an opportunity because there wasn't one during the council meeting to applaud the, um, mayoral appointment of Naomi Goldberg as the next LGBTQ liaison here for the city. Um, I have absolutely no hesitancy saying this as the previous LGBTQ liaison, that she is by far the most experienced and eminently qualified, uh, person that will fill this role so far. Um, she has over a decade of experience working in, um, in LGBTQ policy work and research, uh, as well as progressive policy advancement to effect change. Um, and she has an incredible network of, of, uh, LGBTQ leaders, both locally and statewide and nationally, that, uh, she will be able to call upon as she continues to do this work to advance equity and equality here in our city. And so, um, I applaud the appointment and, uh, I believe she is a third ward resident, so I'm also grateful for that. Thanks.
Councilmember Hayner?
Thanks. Just quickly, I wanted to speak to the remarks you had remade earlier that everyone's looking forward to shorter meetings and, so, you know, I, I just did a little thought experiment, uh, uh, here and I took the total time of our meeting, cut out public speaking and introductory remarks and so on and, and, uh, the breaks and, um, you know, you take that, take that number and divide it by eleven, everybody gets to talk for about twenty-two minutes tonight. And, uh, I spoke for seventeen forty on ten topics, including one of which I was a sponsor, or, you know, around, uh, two minutes and thirty seconds per topic, more or less, uh, including this. So, you know, I don't think that's so outrageous. I could have spoken for six minutes on each of, you know, the dozens of things that were here. And so, um, you know, I mean, i- if they were of interest, I, I, I would at least speak to things once. I mean, I think it's incumbent on all of us to have these conversations publicly. And so this notion that we're gonna shorten our meetings just for the sake of shortening our meetings doesn't sit well with me. Okay, secondly, um, I, you know, in all my research on planning and going through the MAP guide and everything for new council members and, and everything that I could to, to get myself up to speed, it's always been, um, apparent in, uh, from, uh, planning, uh, outside people who facilitate planning. apparent in, uh, from, uh, planning, uh, outside people who facilitate planning processes and training and so on, that planning is supposed to stay above politics. And it's clear that it's anything but that here in our city. So I have my concerns about that. I think I've expressed them. I've expressed them in writing to some of you, the mayor and so on. And, and, uh, you know, I think they're legitimate concerns. We are not, planning is not about politics in this town, especially when it comes to appointments. And you'll see that and I'll speak to it more next week. And I'd finally, I'd like to just say that, uh, you know, Ed, there's a lot of talk about, uh, labeling and, and labeling people who's progressive, who isn't and so on. And I, I think it's all hooey. Um, the, uh, and, you know, one of the great progressives, uh, FDR said, "The test of our progress, uh, is not whether we add more to the abundance of those who have much. It's whether we provide enough for those who have too little." And I think we should bear that in mind as we move forward with these, with these decisions. We, we haven't seen the outcomes that, uh, we wish we have with many of our planning decisions and many of our land use decisions. And I think it's important to bear in mind that, uh, you know, what are we really doing this for? Thank you.
Councilmember Ramlovi.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I just want to touch on the, the comments that we made about the length of their meetings. Um, I've been accused many times now, um, of taking too much time being the reason for long meetings. Uh, I will just say tonight, uh, we didn't have much of a, a presentation given by, uh, any part of our government. Uh, that's it. Sometimes it takes a long time. Uh, we didn't have any public hearings. We had fewer than 10 public commentators at the beginning of the meeting. And we all were watching our times and, and, and time limits were strictly imposed tonight for the first time in a while. Uh, we had things called a question. You know, it's just, um, that's fine. I can work within these rules. But, uh, I, I fear that there's a, there's an attempt to stifle conversation and, and, and steamroll things without proper discussions and discourse. And, uh, you know, I, 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 I won't have my voice silenced and I won't have the voice of my constituents silenced in, in this attempt to, um, to, uh, steamroll through policy differences. So, um, I'll, I'll just say that, that, you know, it's, it's, it's after 11 already. And this is a very short meeting with a small agenda. I don't know if we have closed session and there was no public hearing. So, uh, to all the people that are joining us, um, you know, clear your next day, uh, because many of these meetings will be long.
For the discussion? Do we have a closed session today, Mr. Postuma?
Yes, we do. Um, we have a closed session on, um, a land acquisition under the Open Meetings Act, as well as a, a attorney-client privileged community, written privileged communication.
We have a motion pleased to go into closed session. Moved by, uh, moved by Councilmember Griswold, second by Councilmember Hainer, to go into closed session for the reasons articulated by Mr. Postuma previously. Roll call vote please, starting with Councilmember Ramlovi.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramlovi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hainer.
Yes.
Councilmember Dish.
Yes.
Councilmember Griswold.
Yes.
Councilmember Song.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Redina.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are in closed session, so if council members can hop on out, uh, go on to the other Zoom and we'll steam a jiffy.
I have a motion to go back into open session, moved by Councilmember Grant, seconded by Councilmember Ollie. Discussion on favor?
Aye.
Posed. We're back in open session. I have a motion to open the agenda, moved by Councilmember Hayner, seconded by Councilmember Grant. Discussion on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. The agenda is reopened. Motion to amend the agenda to add that thing. What is that thing?
The Botsford Resolution.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moved by Councilmember Grant, seconded by Councilmember Hayner. Discussion on favor? Approved. It's on the agenda. Now moving the motion. Councilmember Grant.
I would like to move a resolution to approve exercise of a right of first refusal to purchase the Botsford property in partnership with Washtenaw County and authorize a contribution of up to $202,500 at 3015 Miller Road.
Seconded by Councilmember Hayner. Discussion. How many people? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Excellent. Discussion on favor?
Aye.
Well opposed. It is approved with nine council members present, thus satisfying the eight-foot requirement. We good? I think we're good.
Quick question. Jackie, where is this going to be? How is this going to be like DC 5?
Yes, I'll pull it in after the closed session on the agenda as soon as I add it to Legistar. Okay.
We have additional people who have come on, Mayor, since the vote.
I think all the council members are here.
All right. So perhaps it's a, it's starting with 11 council members present, thus satisfying the eight-foot requirement. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Councilmember Griswold, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. Discussion on favor?
Aye.
Good night, folks.
We're adjourned. Thank you, people.
Good night.
Thank you.